Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Megane Communications. Megane offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Transmission of electricity to Martha's Vineyard and other matters to be presented at the connection of the proposed electric cable. That's a cable to Martha's Vineyard. So, just briefly to just highlight, I know a lot of people here are probably concerned about the Mayflower Wind Project and why we're having an executive session. We just found out that recently our preferred site at Surf Drive is not an option to be used. So now there's two sites in the Heights that are proposed that we're taking under consideration. So I don't want to go into any details right now about it, but that was the gist of our discussion, as well as other health and safety issues that we'll be discussing at a later date. We will have an update later during the meeting, the public session, this session. It's really just going to be to explain where we're at, not going to be a lot of debate. If you want to make a comment, you can, but I'd like to keep it brief, knowing that this is the earliest stages of this process, so just give you that word now. I'm not going to, we're not going to be prepared to answer questions in detail, because we have limited information. All we know now is the proposed locations, but we don't have a lot of really information to share that's really...
You mentioned there's going to be public hearings coming up as this project continues on and we look further.
We will be having public hearings as we progress further along. So the first thing is called to order, and if you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Mr. Patterson, would you like to read that?
It'd be a pleasure. Whereas Richard LaRuffo of Boy Scout Troop 38 has successfully completed the qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting, and Richard LaRuffo met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and Falmouth. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special court of honor to award this symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank, and whereas Richard LaRuffo is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege, now therefore we, Douglas C. Brown, Nancy R. Taylor, Samuel H. Patterson, Megan English Braga, and Angelé Scott Price, as select board of the Town of Falmouth, to hereby declare and proclaim Richard LaRuffo as an Eagle Scout. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 20th day of December 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is Mr. LaRuffo here this evening?
I see him in the back.
Would you like to tell us about your project?
Sure.
Come on up.
You can't hide from us back there.
Congratulations.
So my project was, I built some historical signposts for the Falmouth Catholic Community, which involves St. Joseph Chapel, St. Thomas Chapel, and the Mary Garden that's next to St. Joseph's. All these signposts were made informational. I had multiple sources of newspaper articles and video sources, and they were installed to give everybody a knowledge of the area and the history behind it, because there is a lot of lost history that people don't see because of COVID, and they're just kind of tourists. So I think it's always nice to bring in more people and bring in people to these areas.
Great.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you so much for that.
Congratulations.
And next we have recognition, and I'd like to just recognize the passing of former B2 Superintendent Don Hopper. Such a gentleman, good man, I'm going to miss him.
Here, here.
Does there anybody else have recognition for anything else?
No.
Okay, and then announcements, are there announcements from the board or staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one quick announcement.
Okay.
For New Year's Eve, if people are trying to find something safe but still fun, the Portuguese-American Association, they're selling very limited tickets, so it will be, you know, it's not going to be a ton of people in that very big, large space that they have at the club, and it'll be a dinner and a DJ, and it will be a really wonderful night. You can take a look, either call them, or go on the Facebook page for Portuguese-American Association, and have an opportunity to take a look and see. Family-friendly, welcome for kids, so take a look.
Great that these holidays are on the weekend this year.
I know.
Public comment, is there anyone here for public comment?
Mark Fineran, Grand Ave. I'd just like to address again to the selectmen, the potential of the upcoming RFQ for the removal of the turbines. Again, I think that with their height, about 262 feet, as I said, they would constitute the second-highest flagpole in the United States, and beyond that, we could put a weather station there and a webcam, so you could have the thing automatically view all the south-facing beaches, so anybody could tune in and see exactly what the weather is in Falmouth, exactly what the beaches look like. I would have to say that you could have a Chiron advertising on the bottom. The amount of money that FCTV perhaps could make off this would be at least appreciable. I mean, I would have to see it be worthwhile, and I mean, we can at least weigh what it would cost to tear them down, as the cost, it would be negligible to do what I propose. And then the second tower, I was thinking again, and I've spoken with a couple of people who are wildlife experts, and again, with a webcam, if we just left that with the potential, there are nesting eagles in Born, and everyone seems to think that the potential of something nesting there, hopefully it would be an eagle, would be great. There are eagle cams across the country. When the eaglets hatch, they literally crash the website, because it's such a popular item, and it just pains me to think that we spent all that money to put them up and to spend more money to tear them down when they have a potential alternative use, and I mean, we should at least weigh it out and quantify what we have. Thank you.
Are you considering responding to the RFP?
Pardon me?
Are you considering a response to the RFP?
Consider anything.
That'd be the way to do it, right? Okay, any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Richard Dubey, Blacksmith Chapel Road. My comment is about concerning the purchase that was approved by town meeting of 38 rifles for the police department. It's not the purchase, it is the disposal of the used rifles. I wonder if it's possible for the board to speak to the chief in some way to have a pause on the disposal of the used rifles, the 22 used rifles, because right now, they would go basically to the highest bidder. And seeing as they are town property, and we did hear from town council as to how we dispose of town property, it's a unique item. It's, they're illegal in the state of Massachusetts. These are military-grade weapons, so the disposal of them by trading them in means that they will eventually wind up on the open market. Until we have a policy, which, you know, this is 19 years since these were purchased, until we have a policy on how to dispose of used firearms that are town property, could we at least have a pause and talk to the chief about, we can sell these to police departments, we could give them to a police department that's needy, but as long as they don't wind up on the public market, I think it behooves the Town of Falmouth to get involved in a way that doesn't reflect poorly on the town, so that we're not contributing to military-grade weapons on the street. They won't be in Massachusetts, because they are classified as assault weapons in Massachusetts, but they can wind up in neighboring states in private hands. So I would ask once again that the board speak to the chief. It doesn't impact the purchase of the new weapons at all, because even the chief stated, the monies from the buyback don't figure into the $86,000 that was approved as a line item. They'll get their weapons, and we support that. We think the chief should get what he needs, and that the Falmouth Police Department should be equipped the way he feels, and this would not impact that at all. It's just a means of getting them into proper hands, and it would reflect well on the Town of Falmouth if we can come up with a new policy for the disposal of town-owned weapons. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Is this for something that's not on our agenda, Mr. Moriarty?
No, it's not, as a matter of fact. Hi, everybody, my name is Dave Moriarty, Falmouth resident. Two quick things. Last night I was out at South Cape Beach. I was puzzled with what was going on in town, and what was happening to our environment, and how we were handling it, and I was praying. I was praying to my Creator and the Great Spirit, and a funny thing happened. I said, you know, I was talking to the Great Spirit, and I said, can you send us a sign? And sure enough, there was a whale in the canal this morning, and I specifically asked Him to send us some whales. So I thought that was pretty interesting, when the spiritual world and the physical world combined, and, you know, it happened to me, and I just can't believe it. It was just very bizarre to wake up this morning with a whale in the canal, especially when I asked for it, you know, how many times does that happen? And one other thing I'd like to speak to is, if you'll give me a moment, is the, I have a public comment on the, the Town of Falmouth enacted the Wind Energy Systems zoning bylaw 240-166 to protect all of the Falmouth citizens. All the town zoning bylaws are approved by the Massachusetts Attorney General. Residential abutters, new wind energy systems should be notified in writing to avoid years and years of expensive, needless litigation. We're going on 12 years now, folks, 12 years, and we haven't been able to put the turbines to bed. Now, do we want to go through that again? No. So we want to make sure that all the abutters along the 1,200 megawatts, it's been increased, it's twice the size of the power coming out of Plymouth.
Moriarty, you're drifting right into this agenda item.
Oh, you're right. You're right, you're right.
We're going to be talking about that at 8:15.
Okay.
I'd like to comment at that time.
Okay, so with that said, didn't mean to get off track there, folks, sorry, I apologize, my fault. The current wind energy system bylaw is defined as all equipment, including substations, transformers, and transmission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, so next, we have approval application for a change of manager of a wine and malt common victual license, Steve's Pizzeria and More, located at 374 Main Street, Falmouth. Any questions or concerns from the board? Nope. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. B is approve application for a change of manager of a wine and malt common victual license at New Golden Dynasty, located at 13 Davis Straits, Unit Number 7, Falmouth. Was this the one I saw that the Cory check was pending? Do we have that?
They said they had no objection pending the Cory, so we can still approve it pending the Cory check.
Pending the Cory. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is approve application of special one-day liquor license, Falmouth Theatre Guild, located at 58 Highfield Drive, Falmouth, January 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 28th, 29th, and 30th. Friday and Saturday hours are 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Sunday hours are 1 to 4 p.m.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just to say that this is for their production of Godspell that will be running Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from January 21st to January 30th.
Thank you. Next is approve application for a change of DBA of an all-alcoholic common victual license. The Pizza Bar LLC doing business has the Pizza Bar, located at 146 Sandwich Road, Falmouth. Proposed DBA is Papa Jake's. Is there any discussion or comments or questions from the board? I move approval.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Next is administrative orders, vote to approve a letter of support for the application to the recycling partnership for residential curbside recycling cart grant. Any questions on that? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for Mr. McConerty finding that additional funding to offset the cost of the recycling carts. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Next is vote to accept a grant in the amount of $15,000 for Mass DEP Electric Vehicle Incentive Program. Vote, oh, that's the end of that one? And I guess we have Mr. Johnson, Scott, and Mr. Suso to thank for this one. Thank you.
Well, the electric vehicle incentive?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's also, Mr. McConerty assisted us on that as well.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. McConerty. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next we have, vote to accept donation in the amount of $500 from Roger and Kathy Marino to the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department donation account.
I move approval with gratitude, thank you.
Thank you very much, second.
Is there a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. I see the check says Town of Falmouth Rescue Squad. Is that a specific squadron within the fire department, or is this going to regular?
We just go to the fire department.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Marino. And next we have vote to allocate $98,000 from AFCEE, that's Air Force Center for Environmental Excellence Mitigation Funds, for the purpose of hydrodynamic modeling of ocean outfall alternatives.
I gave you the tongue question early.
A little bit. And so this is something we discussed at our last meeting, and we had to post it for a vote before we could proceed, so we're back.
Just a reminder for the public, if they didn't see that, that this is as we're looking to figure out what we do with our wastewater treatment in the future, one potential option is an outfall pipe, and so we need to take a look at that, and certainly we felt that this fit in with the purpose of those AFC mitigation funds.
And this is the treated effluent after it goes through our wastewater treatment facility, which is a tertiary system that gets the nitrogen levels down to at or below what it is in the ocean.
So is there a motion to approve?
I would motion that the select board allocate $98,000 from AFCEE mitigation funds for the purpose of hydrodynamic modeling of ocean outfall alternatives.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And next we have a vote to grant license to Buca Corp., DBA Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, to maintain encroachments at 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, North Falmouth.
I move approval, we spoke about this at length at our last meeting.
Correct.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next we have a vote to affirm appointment of Frank Duffy, Town Council, because his term is coming to an end, and we need to keep him on till we get the next guy in line, with gratitude. Thanks for sticking around, Frank.
There you are.
Appreciate that.
I move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you for giving us the extra time, Mr. Duffy. And next we have a vote to approve a letter of support for the application, oh, excuse me, this is the Osprey nesting, vote to approve request to raise an osprey nesting structure on a parcel of town land. This is just to approve them to start the process of getting the permit with the Conservation Commission, I believe, and they'll come back to us if they're successful.
Are you asking that we waive the fees as we're doing this?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I know what we're...
Okay.
Thank you. We brought some clearer maps, if that would be helpful, with where it is now, and also what it looks like and why it needs to be moved.
Barbara, could you describe for our listening audience where it is?
So, I'll let Kevin do that.
So this new structure is going to be right where Route 28 crosses the Child's River, there's a little parcel that, it's an old dirt road, it used to be the old Wacoit Highway. Well, it still is the old Wacoit Highway, it used to be the Wacoit Highway, before that bridge was built over the Child's River. And we're asking to basically raise a structure about 20 feet from a current utility pole that has a problem nest on it. The second page of that is actually a picture of that pole, you can see some fire damage up under new leaves, the new twigs that have been dropped, so we're just asking to let us put a structure about 20 feet from that existing pole.
And we have been working with staff from the Conservation Commission to make sure anything that we suggest as a location is in agreement, that he's in agreement with us on.
Right.
Just so you know.
Very good.
And move approval for that, and also for the waiving of the fees.
Can I raise a question? Pardon me?
Sure.
We're just double-checking with Town Council about a fee waiver on a, this is not a building permit, this is a Conservation Commission filing fee.
So we may not have that authority?
At present, that's not within your policy, so we will need to explore that and get back to the board with Town Council's assistance, so just, that one just needs to remain in flux a little longer.
But we won't charge anything for the free advertising.
Okay.
But I'd move approval of the first piece, and then we'll get some more information on the fee waiver.
Second.
Thank you.
So we are supposed to be having permit hearing on the 5th of January, and there have to be payments made before, to go along with those applications, so how will we handle that?
Well, let's say that...
Well, I guess my motion would be if we have authority to waive the fee, I'll include that in my motion, but I don't, I think what we're hearing is just at this point, we don't have, we have a fee waiver policy, and it just doesn't include, we don't have a policy on this, because we've never been asked to do this, so, but my motion will include a waiver of those fees if we have the authority to do so, once we hear from Town Council.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking this on.
Special events recurring, diving into recovery, freezing for a reason, polar plunge, Gossnold Incorporated, Falmouth Heights Beach, Saturday, February 12th, 10 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Green date Saturday, February 26th.
I move approval, we had no objections from any town staff.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
More power to them. Yeah, good luck with that.
Thank you.
Next is Wetlands Dock Hearing, 7:30, right on the time. Wetlands Dock Hearing, Teague I Campbell, reconstruct pier, ramp, and float on the same general footprint as the existing dock in and over the waters of Rans Canal, located at 147 Bay Road Extension, continued from October 25th, 2021, and November 8th, 2021.
Do you want me to read the petition?
Yes, please.
The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77, Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday. This is the old one. October 25th, 2021.
So it's, today's day is December 20th?
December 20th?
20th, yeah.
2021, at 7:30 in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Teague I Campbell, for permission to reconstruct the pier, ramp, and float on the same general footprint as the existing dock in the waters of Rans Canal, located on 147 Bay Road Extension, North Falmouth, Mass. Affected area is Rans Canal. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Office of the Select Board, per order of the Select Board, and I'm not sure of the dates that this was published.
Well, that was the original public hearing, notice it's been continued.
Okay, thank you. So it was noticed on October 1st and October 8th, 2021, in Falmouth Enterprise.
That's an old one.
We just have one second to get the plan.
We got the last plan popped up. Turn it over, thank you. I have one, another plan. So I got to close this one down?
Close that one down.
Yep. And... Date is 7/22, though.
One of those.
Doesn't look like it. Man, I can try this one, but I don't think that's it.
On paper.
Yeah, that's it.
There's the fairway.
That isn't it, though.
They have it on paper.
What do you want to do?
Go with that, they have it on paper.
Okay.
Can you leave it up, though?
All right. That was the last, that wasn't the most current.
Thank you, sorry about the text.
Sorry about the technical difficulties. Good evening for the record, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney and I've been hired by the applicant to help with this. You might all recall better than me since I wasn't there the last time. There's been a hearing already on this proposal. You might recall that Mr. Campbell seeks to reconstruct and improve the existing dock that he's got there that is here at this point. He wants to extend it and move it back. He wants to extend it out nine feet and move it back approximately eight feet. At the hearing, two neighbors that have properties on the terminal end of the canal, just off the map, off the plan down here, came forward and expressed some concerns that the addition of the length of the dock and Mr. Campbell's boat might create a bit of a pinch point there and make navigation difficult. So we've done a few things to address these concerns in order to rebut the concerns. The first is Mr. Reither, he doesn't have it here tonight, but you have it in your packets. Since the last time Mr. Reither put on the plan a 25-foot wide fairway, he looked at the bathymetry and saw the depths that were in the canal and put on two lines that show what he thought was the reasonably available navigation area, and it's approximately 25 feet wide plus a few feet at either side. So if you look at the plan, I can't show you because it's not here, but there's plenty of width for a boat to go by, even with Mr. Campbell's extension and with the boat on the dock. Secondly, on the plan that you have in your packet, Mr. Reither also put on a boat that represents the size of the boats that the neighbors have on the terminal end. What's the name of it again? The north, what?
Thirty-eight, True North.
One of them has a thirty-eight True North boat that is 38 feet long and has a beam of 13 and a half feet, and the boat that's shown on the plan is intended to represent that. And we would suggest to the board that that shows that there's adequate room for a boat to get by. But in addition to that, the neighbors reached out to Mr. Campbell and they wanted to see if they could get a little bit more clarification about it, and they asked him to give them a ride on their vessel. And I don't know if any of them are here tonight, and so I wasn't there. I can't represent exactly what was said or wasn't said, but Mr. Campbell did tell me that he felt that once the neighbors took a ride in there and they looked at the plan and they went by the area in question, that some of their concerns were lessened, that they felt that there was enough room. And again, if they're here tonight, I might be corrected on that, but that's what Mr. Campbell said to me, that he felt the meeting went very well and that they were less concerned than they were at this particular meeting. But in addition to all of that, we also hired a consultant, and with me tonight, I'm going to embarrass him with some of his credentials, but I just want to tell you that we hired a consultant to give an opinion about whether a reasonable boater, someone with, anybody that gets out on the water has to have reasonable boating skills to maneuver their vessel around. And Mr. O'Connell is going to tell you that he is of the opinion that a reasonable boater with reasonable boating skills should be able to pretty easily get back and forth through this narrow point in the channel. I put all his credentials in the letter, and again, I'm not going to go through with them, but the reason we retained him is he came to my attention because in addition to having technical background as far as a degree from MMA, he's also the pilot of the Whale Watch boat that goes out of Barnstable, so he's regularly out on the water. In his career, he worked for several people that own yachts and has taken yachts all around the waters of Cape Cod, all the waters of the Caribbean. And in addition to piloting the Whale Watch, he also manages Millway Marine, and so he has to deal with regular, average, reasonable boaters and has to understand their skill level to get to places like the fuel dock and into their slips, et cetera. And Mr. O'Connell and I went and visited the site, and I'd like him to come to the podium now and just tell you what he observed and his opinion about why a boat should be able to get by there without a problem.
Before, could I just ask you a question about something you said?
Certainly.
I understood you to say that since coming to us last time, he's moved the dock eight feet to the south?
No, no. The dock is exactly the same. What I was saying was that the neighbors expressed concern that the proposal to extend the dock by nine feet, so that there's two things happening and nothing's different than the last time. This is the footprint of the existing dock right here.
Right.
I guess I can use this mouse, right?
But it's extending out and becoming longer.
Yeah, so this is the existing dock. It comes from this bulkhead.
Yeah.
And goes out to this particular point here. It's being extended nine feet out this way.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, the existing dock goes all the way out to here. Do you see this, this float here?
Right.
And so it's being extended from there out to here, but it's also being pulled back. If you look here, the float is here, and in fact, the day that Mr. O'Connell and I went out there and met Mr. Campbell, Mr. Campbell's boat was on there and it was, it's tied up pretty much almost a little bit beyond the front. And so I think two things are going to happen. One, it's going to go out, and the reason why it's going out was because conservation requires three feet of depth at low tide where the float is, but it's also being pulled back. And if you notice here, and I think Mr. O'Connell's going to point this out, the most narrow point of the channel is right here, and by pulling the boat back, it's going to assist and widen it up. Even that few feet is going to make a big difference.
Okay. And the other question I was going to ask you is, what is the actual width at the, on that width of the canal there?
So depends on what you mean by that. So the plan that you have in front of you has two lines. There's a line right about here and there's a line right about here that shows where the depths are, that there's a 25-foot wide plus wide navigable fairway at mean low water.
Well, I'm asking for the width of the canal. You have a diagonal there. I couldn't read it on my plan.
Oh, this particular figure?
Yes, sir.
Jeff, does that say 75? It's a kid's eight to 75.
It says 25.
Yeah. Can you tell us what that, Jeff will look for that dimension, Mr. Brown?
The 25-foot width here, I'm going to guess that you probably have 75 or so total feet.
Sounds like 76.
Yeah. It's 76, Mr. Reither says, yeah. And that's from, if you note, Mr. Brown, that it's mean low water, from mean low water to mean low water. So when the water comes up, there's obviously going to be more. So the plan shows, you know, basically, I don't want to say the worst because you can have a negative tide, but you know, the tougher situation is shown on the plan. The mean high is over here, so when the high tide is there, there's about a four-foot tide there.
Mm-hmm.
The channel gets more wide, wider.
Right.
And also the fairway, what Jeff Reither tried to do with that was to be very reasonable and show where the bathymetry has enough depth, and the channel gets pretty deep. It's six or seven feet, I think, even at low tide.
I understand the logic, what you're presenting. My question is the actual width of the canal and then the width of your structure and how much it projects out into the canal, because I believe we need to keep under 25% of that width.
Oh, it's under 25%, right, Jeff?
Yes, it's, uh, the data relation is showing...
Jeff, you need to come to the mic if you would, please.
Yes, sir.
I just couldn't read the plan. It's not very clear.
Well, we have a dimension of 19 feet from low water to, uh, to the, remember this, can you, Brian, can you see something there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's 19, right?
Correct.
Low water to the, well, C-word point of the float.
Right, and then we got to add eight feet for the beam of the boat. So I think we're over the 25.
Well, do you have the plan that's, you got to...
This is why I brought this up at the last meeting, and I asked if the applicant would consider pivoting the structure a little bit to get to the wider point of the canal and potentially reducing the projection into the canal because it just don't feel good about going over that 25%.
Yeah, we didn't go over the 25%. The 19 feet divided by 76 is 25%.
Yeah, but you got to add the eight-foot beam of the boat if you're going to park it on the outside there.
I think...
That's part of the projection.
I think the rule is about the projection of the structure.
I think the structure has to be less than 25%.
It's not the boat.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the boat. It's the fixed structure, and at 20, it's 19, not even 20 feet, so it's going to be less than 25%.
Kind of cutting it close, though, isn't it, when the boat doesn't count? Okay.
Did you, did you get the plan with the fairway drawn?
I do have it, but it's just like I said, I can't read it because the way it printed, it's just not...
I'd like to look at this one.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it's always helpful for us to have the big one. We'll take it. That's helpful. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Is it okay if I introduce Mr. O'Connell now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Hello, Ian O'Connell here. I purposely visited the site at an astronomical low tide. It was, I think it was December 4th, we went there, and what you don't quite see here is that this is like, I consider this like a turning basin here. This is like a pond at the end of this, and this is a dead end, and there's maybe three or four homes around here. The largest boat that's moored in this area is 38 feet, but there's really no reason for anybody to be transiting this area because it is a dead end, number one. It's kind of treacherous to get in there, number two. There's a, the canal splits, there's a big rock pile in between as it splits, and then out by the breakwater, there's another rock pile you have to be careful of when you're coming in here. So it's not like, you know, there's people at night going to dinner to a restaurant through here. I mean, there's, there's very little traffic.
Are there any other docks up in this other end?
Um, the big boat, the biggest boat that's in this area is on a pair of moorings. It's got two, so it doesn't swing. So it's about right here, and I believe there is a dock behind someone's house that is in this area right here, but I don't think the boat's substantial in size. I did notice at, at low tide especially, this area is really in a hollow to begin with, but the lower the tide, the more protected you are. There's zero influence on wind. There's no current running in here. I mean, I was there at low tide, and astronomically, you will witness like the biggest, you know, type of currents that go in and out of this channel, just because more water has to get in, more water has to get out. I was watching leaves, you know, sitting there, you know, just sort of kind of floundering, not really moving at all, but it's of my opinion that even when, you know, Mr. Campbell's boat is here now, and as you pull it back, the further you pull it back, the bigger this pond is, the more you open up this, this transiting area. I've spent a lot of time in Florida, I know this is in Florida, but everyone with a dock in a canal, man-made canal, there are boats lined up. I mean, everyone has a boat, and you know, there are areas down there that are so tight. I mean, one boat can pass. You can't even turn it around unless you get into an open area between people's docks, so it's not a very, it's not a common, it's a very common thing, you know, to have the situation there. But, you know, a reasonable boater, you know, people, I can see someone exploring on a little whaler or something like that coming up into this cute little cove. I don't see anybody, aside from the person that lives here, that transits this area frequently, has local knowledge. I just don't see them coming up there and creating a lot of traffic, you know? I mean, once in a great while, you might have someone come in exploring in that spot there because it's cute, but other than that, I really don't see any reason why it would be a problem.
Okay. Questions from the board? Questions from the public? Anyone here to speak on this project? Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone have any other concerns or comments?
I don't. I'd move, unless there's anything else, I'd move that we close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Thoughts on the...
I move approval.
I'll second. I'm going to take you at your word that the boat doesn't count on the 25%?
No, no, it's always been the, the structure, and I only know because Doug Jones always asked that question, and it was always about how far out the structure projected.
Mm-hmm.
That was where, and then it's up to us to then assess whether or not the boat on that structure is problematic, but I guess I would say, we heard, you know, from concerned and vocal abutters, and it sounds like some of their concerns were laid, at least enough that they are not speaking against the project tonight.
And we didn't get any fresh emails from them?
No. So that, I mean, that my big concern is just obviously, we want people who are in that area and want to use the waterway to be able to. So if they feel that this pulling it back opens that up and, you know, takes away the concerns that they had, then I feel comfortable with it, given everything else that we've heard.
And I would say as a boater, and have been and out of very congested harbors, that sometimes if you're coming in in the dark, you actually would like to use those boats so that you know you're in the channel, and so you actually stay, you know, just, just off of them at a reasonable distance. And so it's almost a good way to demarcate where the, the channel is actually located. So given the minimal traffic in this canal area and the fact that there's virtually nothing, this is not, you're not going to have any through boating. I, I don't have any objection to this particular layout of this dock.
Okay.
You had a motion and a second.
So I, yeah.
Is that a motion?
It's a mo...
I think Anji moved it and...
And I second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we have Wetlands Dock Hearing for Arthur Muse, reconstruction of dock within the same footprint, construction of low-profile vinyl bulkhead in and over the waters of Eel Pond located at 148 Antler Shore Drive, East Falmouth. And given that this is in conjunction with the neighbors' project, Mr. Boselli, can we address both in a similar presentation or...
Be happy to.
So you don't have to do a double, double job?
I'm happy to.
And let me just read, let me start with the public hearing notice.
Thank you.
I'll start with this one. The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, December 20th, 2021, at 7:30 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Arthur Muse for permission to reconstruct a dock within the same footprint and construction of a low-profile vinyl bulkhead on the waters of Eel Pond located at 148 Antler Shore Drive, East Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is Eel Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the office of the Select Board, and this was published Friday, December 3rd and December 10th, in the Falmouth Enterprise. Can I read the second hearing? Yes, thank you.
Yes, please, thank you.
The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, December 20th, 2021, at 7:30 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Richard Fontana for permission for the reconstruction of a dock within the same footprint and construction of a low-profile vinyl bulkhead in the waters of Eel Pond located and construction of a low-profile vinyl bulkhead in the waters of Eel Pond located at 154 Antler Shore Drive, East Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is Eel Pond. Interested parties may review the fi, review the file on this hearing at the Office of the Select Board. Published, publication dates Friday, December 3rd and Friday, December 10th in the Falmouth Enterprise.
Shall I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. For your, for your record, my name is Michael Borselli, Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicants. Um, you read in Fontana. I don't think you read in Muse. Did I miss that?
We did.
That was the second one.
Oh, okay, that was the second one.
Yep.
Well, there's side-by-side properties. They're located on Antler Shores. I'll, I'm showing you the Muse property first. Antler Shores is on the, on the left side of the plan. Um, the property has frontage on Eel Pond. And the Muse house is located here. It's a typical residential property with typical landscaping driveway, et cetera. Now gonna trace with the mouse the configuration of the existing licensed dock. This was, um, built several years ago, received the benefit of an order of conditions originally from the Conservation Commission and, and from this board. It also, uh, received the benefit of a Chapter 91 license. It's in a state of, uh, I don't wanna say disrepair, but soon will be in a state of disrepair, and they wanna maintain it. Chapter 91 license requires you to maintain the structure. Um, they also have a, uh, um, an erosion concern. And, uh, part of the dock reconstruction also includes the installation of a very low-profile, um, vinyl bulkhead along where I'm tracing the mouse now on the existing coastal beach above mean high water, directly adjacent to, um, an existing deck on the house. Um, Mr. Muse has witnessed the beach in front of his property erode. He's actually noticed some, uh, issues with his foundations, and he's very concerned. So in order to mitigate for further erosion, he's proposing to put in this bulkhead. The, uh, plans have on them, uh, detail of the bulkhead in cross-section. It's a very low profile bulkhead. In fact, it only projects above the beach by two feet. Most of it's in, in, under the beach. The theory is if, if the beach continues to erode, it'll end up eroding to the wall, and then it would stop. That's a sort of a secondary, uh, part of the application. The, um, dock itself is, um, supported by timber pilings. Everything will be reconstructed in the same footprint, same type materials. Uh, Conservation Commission issued a order of conditions approving this. Harbor Master was given copies of the plans. Directly next door, the land of Fontana, you can see below. Similar situation, in fact, that they're, they're friends, and they, if they get approval from you, they hope to, uh, do this as a joint effort with the same contractor. It's more cost-effective that way. Uh, this one's slightly different. Um, their dock does not project out into Eel Pond. It's alongside the shore. But on the, uh, underneath the dock is a, uh, it's, it's, part of its construction is with a, uh, a timber bulkhead that's starting to, um, break down and corrode, and there's actual erosion through it and some subsidence at the top of the wall. So their, their dock is parallel. You can see it shaded in tan here. Uh, it also has the benefit of a Chapter 91 license. They propose to remove all of the, uh, existing dock and install a new, um, timber bulkhead, and then build the dock again parallel to it. This is a cross-section of how that would be built. The dock itself, the timber bulkhead on the landwood side, um, support members underneath, so it's a five-foot walkway that's parallel to shore. And then the boat ties, uh, alongside and parallel to shore. This also received a favorable, uh, order of conditions from Conservation. Harbor Master was given copies of the plans. So if you approve this, both, uh, parties are going to, um, get, uh, retain the same contractor to do this as sort of one big combined project, and that'll minimize disruption, same construction access and things like that. And I'm happy to take questions on either one.
Any questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moving to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Hearing, is there a motion to approve or further comment?
I'd move approval. I think, you know, we're not gonna see a change in the docks. I mean, it's really just improving them and obviously creating a little bit of security for those erosion issues that I know a lot of folks, um, in that area, you know, kind of struggling with, so.
And they're both on the same footprint, correct? So that there's, it's nothing really new. So I, I would move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Borselli.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Two.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
You too.
This motion applying to both?
Yes, so I'd move appro, yes, move approval for both, Muse and Fontana.
Second for both.
Uh, second vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to confirm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have brief staff update on Mayflower Wind proposed electric cable installation in Falmouth. Just to give the public an idea of where we're at and what we know so far.
And all of this is subject to, uh, go, further negotiations, right?
Absolutely. This is just an update informational. We haven't really engaged in negotiations. We've just been strategizing our position.
Good evening. Um, thank you. Peter Johnson-Staub, Assistant Town Manager. And this is, I just wanna say before, um, I sort of get into any of the specifics of the project that this is obviously a very large and complex project. I do not profess to be expert on all of the details of this many-faceted project. And, uh, the town is still in early phases, although it's been over a year since we heard that Mayflower was proposing a landfall of its cable, um, for its offshore wind energy in Falmouth. We're still, uh, very much in the early stages of our evaluation of the proposal, and neither the town nor staff have taken any positions. So with that, I have a, a brief update, um, prepared for, uh, the board and for the public. I will say the, the public did meet an executive session this evening to discuss strategy with respect to negotiating the impacts of this project should the project move forward with a landfall in Falmouth. And, uh, you know, with that, there will also be opportunity for public input. And, um, there, uh, there have been some brief public presentations before, and there will be before any final decisions are made. So I wanna make sure that that's clear. We have, uh, very limited time on our agenda this evening. But the board has discussed bringing this back before any, before the board takes any position on a landfall in Falmouth or any location of a landfall in Falmouth. So this is by no means, um, you know, this is not intended as a real public forum, and certainly there will be public forums before any decision is made by the town. So I just wanna make sure that's clear upfront. Um, so, starting at the very high-level overview, um, Mayflower Wind won a federal bid to leave offshore an offshore area about 20 miles south of Nantucket. And according to Mayflower, when the area has potential to generate, uh, over 2,000 megawatts of electricity, which is, uh, sufficient to power 800,000 homes. That's not all being permitted right now. That is the, um, the area that, uh, the, the leased area has the capacity to provide that, um, with multiple phases of, of a project, of projects. Mayflower is, for its current proposal, pursuing land, landfall at two locations. One has actually already been approved. It was existing, pre-existing before Mayflower. They acquired the rights to this landfall, uh, at Brayton Point in Somerset. But the, what Mayflower requires and what they are proposing for the current phase of their project is both locations. So one interconnection, one landfall at Brayton Point, and another in Falmouth. Mayflower said that it, uh, hopes to begin delivering power by mid-2020s. Uh, there are local, state, regional, and federal permits, uh, and approvals that are required for onshore and offshore construction. Um, I've provided a partial list of the approvals that are required. Again, this is not exhaustive. There are others in addition to this. But they include a Federal Bureau of Ocean Energy Management permit, a Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act approval, Massachusetts Energy Facility Sightings Board approval, Falmouth Conservation Commission if there is landfall in Falmouth. Town meeting easements and Article 97 relief are required if this is to move forward with the Falmouth landfall. And grant of locations from the Select Board would also be required. So we have had, staff have had initial communications with Mayflower to learn about its plans. As I mentioned, there have been public presentations in March, October, and November of last year. The, the Select Board did authorize Mayflower to access, uh, town property to conduct initial feasibility testing so that plans could be presented to the town for further review and analysis. Those temporary access agreements were for Surf Drive and Grand Avenue, AKA, uh, Falmouth Heights Beach. Uh, and also for 565 Blacksmith Shop Road, uh, and that is the DPW compost and yard waste facility that was being looked at as a potential substation location, which Mayflower has since abandoned. So we, we have begun negotiating a potential host community agreement. Uh, the host community agreement would require Select Board approval, and it would, um, really, the purposes of the host community agreement are to protect the town's interests. Um, so we would be looking to mitigate the impacts of construction, both temporary and permanent. What's the disruption and, and how can that be addressed? Be the traffic concerns, tearing up the roadways, how are the roadways restored, how are the public facilities restored? Uh, Mayflower would, is proposing to permanently locate equipment on town property, so that has a value to, um, to Mayflower, and the host community agreement would include a payment that Mayflower would be making in exchange for that. And also in exchange for support for easements and Article 97 relief, there would be compensation, uh, to be negotiated.
Pete, could you tell people what the Article 97 refers to?
Yes, thank you, Sam. Uh, Article 97 refers to, uh, land that has been taken for open space or conservation purposes. And if there's going to be, uh, any construction that violates the terms of that protection, then it requires town approval, affirmative town approval. It also requires state approval. So in this case, uh, Mayflower is proposing to make landfall, uh, at a town beach, so that's land that is under Article 97 protection.
Also, Peter, if I could interrupt, I think it was really important to, uh, identify the fact that enlisted with your approvals is the two-thirds majority approval at town meeting, ultimately, there's no way getting around that. So they will have to work with us in one way or another.
Right, right. So the host community agreement doesn't, uh, if, if the Select Board were to enter a host community agreement with Mayflower, a, as Mr. Brown alluded to, that doesn't mean the project happens. It still needs town meeting approval. Oops. So we've not taken a position on landfill yet. We've begun negotiating the, uh, the, a potential host community agreement. Um, we have secured from Mayflower an agreement to reimburse the town for up to $50,000 for environmental and health studies. Uh, and those have really not been initiated yet because we needed more clarity on the landfall locations. That has, uh, recently become more clear, uh, in that we, we started off, as I mentioned, there was approval for, uh, study of Surf Drive and for Falmouth Heights Beach. And, um, frankly, we were still in the midst of discussing with Mayflower the feasibility and viability of Surf Drive, and they deemed that their timeline was such that they had to go ahead and file their preferred and alternate locations with, uh, with the state, both, uh, Massachusetts Energy Policy Act Office and Energy Facility Sightings Board. Uh, so they went ahead and filed their preferred and alternate routes, um, which both are in Falmouth Heights. One is Worcester Ave., and the other is Central Park and at the Falmouth Heights Field. The prefer, they also filed their preferred substation and alternate substation locations. And those are the Lawrence Lynch property at 396 Gifford Street is the preferred option, and the alternate is the Cape Cod aggregates location at the intersection of Thomas Landers and Blacksmith Shop Roads. So this is a map representing what the route looks like, um, and I'll zoom in a little here so that you can see the landfall a little better. So as you can see, the landfall, um, the preferred route is, is here, Worcester Ave., Worcester Court, uh, and it runs up to Jones Road. Ultimately, up, up to Jones Road, and the Central Park-Falmouth Heights route, um, comes up along, through the park, along Crescent Ave., uh, and then goes up Maravista to Jones Road and up to Gifford.
Uh, Falmouth Heights Road. It's Falmouth Heights Road, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Falmouth Heights Road. Thank you. So the, um, a, as I said earlier, um, the public input opportunities remain for, uh, in addition to the town decisions, also for state and federal permits. Um, none of them have been issued to date. Town negotiations are ongoing. Uh, Select Board is welcoming public input. There will be, the Select Board has indicated that there will be at least one, if not multiple, public input session scheduled, potentially even a dedicated meeting, um, for this topic. We will be seeking input on the landfall locations, uh, which ones are preferred, if any of them are acceptable. Also, on what mitigation should be sought, um, if the town were to proceed. And as I mentioned, those mitigations, um, range from how the streets are restored, how traffic is managed, what the construction season is, and what improvements the town might be seeking from Mayflower in exchange for that disruption. There will be, as I mentioned, an environmental and health analysis. That will be made public before, uh, this is brought to town meeting. And if a host community agreement is reached, it, that will certainly become a public document as well. So that concludes my remarks. Happy to take any questions from the board or comments.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Certainly, Mr. Moriarty and then Mr. Penneren, and gentlemen in the back. We'll get you in order.
Go ahead. Did I get up the dress?
Yes, please. Go to the mic, because we want the people at home to be able to hear you.
And as, uh, the chair noted, and Peter, you know, some of these questions are probably likely questions that we're gonna copy down, and that'll be part of our, you know, in, information that we're gathering. In other words, we're not Mayflower, so there, some of your questions may not be something we can answer.
I, I understand. I just wanna put it out there in the public so that people have a chance to think about these things. Will the, uh, will the radiation be measured before the project, during the project, and who will monitor it after the project?
We have a consultant online. What's the name of that consultant, please?
Exponent.
Exponent, exponent. And I guess they're pretty highly regarded for environmental-
Because there's a lot of radiation already, and you have to add that to the project, especially with 5G coming down the road. It's, it's gonna be a-
Give me a little of a perk, you're saying, I guess.
Um, who will make up the difference for the loss in equity in these homes? When a power line goes by your house, you lose 25% of your equity immediately. Will the town, other taxpayers of the town make it up? Will Mayflower Wind make it up? Will the federal government make it up? Who, where will that money come from?
Okay, I don't know that answer right now, but we'll put that on the list.
And, uh, will the business owners be compensated? I mean, they're having a terrible time as it is right now with the COVID. Now we're gonna shut down the town for another two years? Will they have a fund to be compensated for their losses?
The businesses in the area that, of where this project is.
Excuse me?
The businesses in the area of where this proposed project is, is what you're asking specifically.
So, yeah. So will that come out of, Mayflower Wind will have to pay for that, right? Not us, not the taxpayers.
These are all the questions and concerns that we're gonna gather together, and we're gonna address these while we develop the host agreement. If it's something that's applicable.
And, and just so the folks at home know, that the project's been increased quite a bit. It's 1,200 megawatts now. Twice the size of Plymouth Newt Plant, okay? Going under residential neighborhoods. With little children, grandchildren, right in the park where the kids play. I'm very concerned, very, very concerned. I guess those are the only questions I have for now. And, uh, yeah, we need a independent monitor system. We, we can't rely on Mayflower.
We do, we have the town's hired independent consultant that will oversee that. He's gonna give us the advice going in before we-
Will, will the town meeting have a chance to, uh, address this person and decide whether or not they're qualified and to be hired? Because we've had a lot of bad consultants in this town, believe me.
Mr. Chairman, the town meeting will not be selecting the consultant. Consultant is already under contract.
We already have the consultant, but they'll be able to ask him questions.
Well, what if they're no good? I mean, how are we gonna vet them?
Well, we already hired them.
Well, Jesus, you know, it'd be nice if we.
We don't really do that at town meeting.
Well, we've got to do it somewhere.
Well, we don't, we don't hire a professional.
I mean, look what happened with the high school. We've hired a guy with three lawsuits pending and we hired him to build our high school? Is this going to be another one of those situations?
I don't think so. Look at all the projects we do successfully. Why not focus on those?
I just want to address Mr. Moriarty's question. This is a science. I worked for a company that actually needed to build secure rooms where intelligence information.
You know, I've heard this story before and I don't want to insult your intelligence, but the children in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, all got leukemia from the power line coming from the power plant. So, please, that's not going to fly here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comments or questions? Yes, sir. I think Mr. Fenneren had his hand up first and then I think you're up after that.
I live right in the area and in the last year or so, they've done something to the radio tower by the mall, Cohog Republic, and it really interferes with all the radio in that area. I mean, I have a, I listen to 95, the Hyannis station. I have an extremely hard time picking that up inside my house. I mean, you have to get the antenna in just the right place. Someone told me, I don't know if this is true, that's why I'm asking, that this cable will be insulated, but it will not be shielded to protect from the electromagnetic field that certainly will generate on it. As David said, now it's up to twice the size of what Pilgrim produced. So, the electromagnetic field is going to be substantial. Is there going to, somebody going to protect us from that somehow or another?
I just want to get your question. I just want to make sure we have the exact language you're saying.
I believe it's called, you know, it's insulated. I believe it's called shielded. And my understanding is that they do not intend to shield this cable. So, the electromagnetic fields that David's talking about and everybody is certainly going to be an item, so someone has to protect us from it.
Well, I might be speaking incorrectly, but I think that at the initial presentation that the Mayflower representative said that it was shielded and gassy, gas-filled. I don't remember exactly, so I shouldn't really say, but there was some mention of that type of protection.
Okay. Well, that's, obviously, it's going to be important because, I mean, you know, there's children around and that's, you know, and as you said again, I mean, that's a serious consequence. And I mean, this is no small utility line. I mean, twice the size of Pilgrim. I mean, it's more than substantial.
Right.
So, I mean, we just have to proceed with caution.
Exactly.
And I'm just curious, though, this, the size of this project has doubled and there's another one that's going on out there, which is also going to feed into Somerset. Why is it that they can't put all their eggs in the Somerset basket, so to speak?
I think they always like to have that redundancy.
Mr., yes?
I can comment on that briefly. So, the, a lot of what shapes Mayflower's proposal in terms of the landfall comes from the state, or I don't even know if it's a state agency. It's the ISO that regulates the flow of electricity. So, the ISO actually gave a number of interconnect potential locations and ranked them and Falmouth is number one on that list. So, it was really kind of at ISO's direction that they're pursuing landfall in Falmouth.
You know, I mean, we're number one. I just don't want to stand up with a bunch of number two. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I have one more question for you.
Oh, let's go in order. Yeah, and then I think we have one more gentleman that raised their hand and then we can come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'm Dave Bosnowski. I'm the president of the Falmouth Heights-Mare Vista Neighborhood Association. And it's difficult, having prepared your, a statement before everything's presented, and some of it's mildly redundant, some in conflict. Last time I was before you was October last year when this was brought to our attention. And I know it's been mentioned that, you know, there's going to be a lot of time for public comments and entertain presentations and whatnot, but this is moving very quickly. If you were to go on Mayflower's website, I mean, there's hundreds of pages that are there that they have to file with the state, with the federal government, and these are progressing very rapidly and several deadlines for public comment on their submissions have already passed.
Only one.
Say again?
Only one, I believe, isn't it?
Well, one will be up in the early part of January and one has already passed, I know. So, they're coming up one by one and we're trying to remind our members that that's your opportunity to make comments. I had made a little chronology here about Concom having already, you know, granted permission for the, or allowing the two locations to be tested, Surf Drive and Falmouth Heights. Town Council had agreed the use of property access and then the board had approved the test boring. They conducted the test boring. They eliminated Surf Drive, leaving us with the Falmouth Heights as one. They subsequently have come back and added also the Central Park Ave. Going back to my questions in October 20, October 2020, we raised a number of questions and we had suggested delaying the decision in allowing this until we could get answers to the questions, but the board chose to go ahead with the, all the permissions. And we still haven't got answers to the questions. And as the gentleman mentioned about the health aspects, health and safety, that's our major concern. And as I said, in the meantime, this process, Mayflower is moving aggressively with, to get this approval. They've got an awful lot of work to do. We all know it. And we will have the opportunity to ask questions, but in the meantime, it's progressing very quickly. Up until now, our organization, Falmouth Heights-Mare Vista Neighborhood Association, we've been very careful not to take a position on anything. We've just been asking questions up until this point. We hadn't had an opportunity to canvass our members, to be perfectly honest with you, and our eight-person board was, we had to have support of our members to do, to do that. We've recently taken a survey of our membership with regards to whether or not they support or oppose onboarding the Mayflower transmission cables under our community beach and neighborhood. The results recently reported 86% of the respondents were opposed to the cables, 14% were approving. To be clear, we're not opposed to clean energy initiative or wind generation. We're specifically opposed to the cables transiting our beach and one of the oldest, most densely populated communities in town. It's quite honestly that simple. Our question, one question that was raised when the town was approached by Mayflower, did the town suggest any alternative locations to Mayflower? Or is Mayflower just driving the ship and just saying it's either Surf Drive or Falmouth Heights?
Prioritized the Surf Drive location and then took all this time until, when did you get the final notice? Actually, we didn't get the notice. They went ahead and filed and told us, we have to file. I don't want to go into it, but we were hoping for Surf Drive.
Well, we were as well. Just in the same regard, in Mayflower's initial description of the project, it mentioned Heights Beach and Worcester Ave, which you've mentioned this evening as well. This has now been described on Mayflower's recently submitted documents as being more specific to describe the site as Worcester Avenue Park. This is, this is the park, the esplanade between the north and southbound lanes of Worcester Court. This is the, the park that's been, you know, destroyed by Nor'easter, several Nor'easters over the past couple of years and it's been reclaimed and the, we had the sewers go through. We had sidewalks go through. It's all been pristinely grown back now. And now to think of digging that up is offensive to us, I think. One justification that Mayflower used on their website was that going up the park would create less traffic congestion during construction, avoid conflict with other utilities. Although it wasn't stated, it's also easier and cheaper for them to go up the grass instead of the roadway. A question was raised along those lines. Has the town given any consideration to the deed conditions and rights of the abutters of the park? Also with regard to Mayflower's initial submission, as to the number of cables, I recall the first report that I attended here, their description was being three cables. And I believe they were described as being shielded and they hadn't chosen the particular cable. They had multiple to choose from. But now subsequently, I've also, they've also described it as being four cables. And I've seen on their website, three power cables plus one communication cable. And now, just in the enterprise last week, in the notice, the legal notice that was published there for the federal consistency review, it was mentioned up to five cables in Falmouth. So, with Mayflower now getting, or being selected by the state to add another 400 megawatts by the state of Massachusetts, does this mean the number of cables will expand further? And where does this expansion end? I mean, how far can they go with this? Zoning rules. We've also seen notice now that they're applying to, for zoning exemptions, particularly for the substation sites and all the electrical compliance in town. Are these zoning rules put in place to protect the town and the people? Are these exemptions in the town's best interest, in our best interest? With regard to the unanswered health and safety concerns, science and experts and history, science experts and history have run into some conflicts over the years. And the long-term exposure to high voltage and EMFs remain a long-term question for all of us, maybe in the short term, but what about 20 years from now or 30 years from now? We need some answers. And hopefully, Exponent can either confirm or oppose what their experts are saying. You may also recall the likes of the tobacco industry when they told us that smoking was safe. We were told the asbestos was safe to use in our home and in ships. Lead paint wasn't even questioned at the time. And lead pipes in Flint, Michigan, diethylstilbesterol, it was safe to use in the 40s. Oxycodon was not supposed to be addictive and look what that's done to us. Let's not make mistakes here. Our lives and the lives of those who follow us for generations would be, would be placed at a large risk. I look forward to some answers to the questions and the public hearings that will be coming up in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Masmanian and I am a resident in Precinct Two, specifically the Heights. And I would like to remind the board that this is a full-time community area. We're made up of parents and grandparents and veterans and alike. And we are concerned. I think Mr. Bosnowski touched on a number of different things, but I would like to leave with the board just some thoughts, not necessarily questions. Mayflower Wind has deep pockets. They have already sponsored road races here. They've sponsored some of our local facilities. I see their name posted everywhere. You go on their website, it's very deep. We're just a small community of area within Precinct Two of 1,400 homes approximately in our association. By the way, I'm speaking on behalf of, not the association. I am a board member, but I'm speaking personally as a taxpayer. This is something we ought to really consider. Why would you put high voltage through the most densely populated area in town? Look on a map. We're more densely populated than downtown. Why would you do that? This is all common sense. Mayflower wants to do it that way, as Mr. Bosnowski said was, because it's the shortest distance to the substation, i.e. cost. It's all about cost. This is all about P and L. Okay? They're a corporation. They have shareholders. They have to represent shareholder value. They do not care necessarily about you or me, whether it be my children, my grandchildren, people who visit our area. Remember, Falmouth Heights Beach is probably the most visited beach, not only by tourists, by taxpayers. We have a number of events that happen on that beach. We also need to think about erosion. If you've driven by the beach in the last couple of days, couple of storms that we've had, I would tell you you lost three feet of beach. They talked about Surf Drive Beach. It was an issue not only because of utilities that were underground, but also because of some floodplain issues. Well, Falmouth Heights Beach, all our residences are mostly in a floodplain. In a few years, it would not fool me if in fact the water is up to the bulkhead and that we really don't have a beach. And what's going to happen when that water goes down those vaults and is sitting on top of 1,200 megawatts? I don't want to be anywhere near it. And I think we really have to use some common sense. And I think that we have to challenge Mayflower to find alternative routes that have little to no impact on taxpayers and on the general public. And that's your responsibility and my responsibility to make sure that happens. Thank you.
All right. You want to follow up? Comment? Quickly, please.
One quick comment.
Okay.
The Energy Facility Sightings Board is prepared to steamroll right over Falmouth. They don't care. They've already said to the town and to the elected officials that we're going forward no matter what you do, whether you have a.
Mr. Moriarty.
Community agreement or not.
Excuse me, Mr. Moriarty. Would you address the.
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Whether you have a community agreement or not, they're going forward full steam ahead. It doesn't have to go through Falmouth. It could go through Fall River. Fall River is already connected to seven states. The infrastructure is already in place. See, if you go through Falmouth, you have to build a brand-new grid from Falmouth all the way up to Boston and you can have the ratepayers and taxpayers pay for it. But if you keep it in the water and you bring it into Fall River, the infrastructure is already there. It's connected to seven states from the old Brent Point Coal Plant. So, you know, feasibly, economically, it makes no sense to come to Falmouth, none at all, unless you want the taxpayers and ratepayers to pay for a brand-new grid from Cape Cod to Boston.
Did you see Mr. Johnson Staub's presentation? They are going to the old Brent Point.
That's one cable. We want this cable. We want the 1,200 megawatts to stay in the water, stay safe, stay away from our kids, and go to Fall River. There's no reason it has to come to Falmouth, none. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you for all that and thank you, Mr. Johnson Staub. Next, we have a brief status update on proposed Eversource electric cable installation to provide supplemental power to Martha's Vineyard. Welcome back.
Good evening. Chairman Brown, members of the board, Mr. Suzo, Mr. Johnson Staub, thanks for having us present before you this evening. I have with me, I'm Ronique Goldstein with Eversource Energy for, for the general public. And I have with me my colleague Terry Forsenger. I cover community relations and I believe you've met Terry last we spoke here before you on October 25th. Terry's with rights and permitting for our distribution part of the company or distribution-grade electricity. I wanted to, aside from thanking you this evening for having us for a brief. the 25th, and then 24 hours later, we saw some pretty significant damage. And I see that Peter McConerty is here among us in the audience, and I wanted to take an opportunity really sincerely to thank Peter and his team and DPW, to thank your public safety officials, Chief Smith and Chief Dunn, and the Con Center, your dispatch, because without the partnerships and the good work that we have going on, you know, in blue skies, and then certainly during gray skies, we would not be able to restore power safely and as quickly as possible without the help of our local partners. So I did want to take a moment to thank them in front of you and the general public, so. And I think Peter knows that I mean that, on behalf of those that worked the storm and both Terry and I did. So it was a long week that we like to all forget, so I'm sure you would too. So moving on to the project at hand, we were here before you on the 25th to talk about a reliability project that is needed, there's an immediate need to serve the island of Martha's Vineyard. It's a set of distribution cables. We did present, and the board recommended on the 25th, that because the route, that was the preferred route by the town, that we do go and speak with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, because a section of the route follows the bike path. We did do that, we wanted to give you an opportunity to hear that we had a meeting, they did not meet in November, so we met on December 1st with the committee. We took in feedback that they, we had a lengthy discussion and presentation with them, similar to the presentation that we gave you in October. We took the feedback and had some additional discussions with members and shared information recently as last week. I'll have Terry actually step in and talk a little bit about some of the feedback we gave. One notable change that was not mentioned at the meeting in October was that because the route goes down from the substation on Stevens Lane to down Jones Road, crosses over Palmer to, I'm going to butcher the name of the hospital, Terrehaune, sorry, thank you, and then meets up with the bike path at that location, we identified an opportunity, you know, for a project that I think you all recognized didn't have a tremendous amount of benefit to the town, but more benefits the residents of the island. We saw an opportunity because the cable would be going, or the conduit rather, would be going down that path to, and because we know that the hospital has incurred outages in recent storms, it's a critical facility for the town. We have an opportunity, because it's underground there, to create a redundancy to the hospital and underground fee to the hospital and to the locations in that area. So that's a new development. I don't have details of how that's all going to look, but it'll be, definitely be conduit and a pad mount transformer, which is basically like an eight-by-four green box where transformers are put in there, and so it will create a second source of supply to the hospital. So we thought this was great news, that we really wanted an opportunity to share with you, and we did share that information with members of the Bike Path Committee as well. So tonight, we're here to just give you a little bit about what we, the feedback that we got from the Bike Path, how things are working with them. The intention is to meet, just sort of to give you kind of the path forward for us that we discussed with the committee, is to meet again with the full committee at their first meeting in January, and then come before you here to gain approval for some of the landright permits or approvals that would need to go into the annual town meeting. So to meet the town meeting warrant, so that's sort of the path that we'll follow. But Terry, go ahead. Hopefully I didn't miss anything.
No, you didn't. We did have some great, a couple of great meetings with key stakeholders at the Bike Path Committee, as well as other members of the town, and Peter as well. We got some great feedback, we went back to the project team, and we redesigned what our infrastructure would look like. Initially, we were proposing to co-locate within the center of the paved path, and the feedback that we got, we went back and redesigned so that we'd be adjacent to set off the paved path, extending the pavement from the 10-foot wide that exists today to the manholes, which would be offset of the bike path today and the conduit system. And so essentially, it would provide for additional pavement, there's been some conversation and some brainstorming about that could be used as a walking portion of the bike trail, you know, and strollers and whatnot. It would also provide for around the manhole locations turnoffs, so if you are a biker or a walker, you could stop for water, tie your shoe, it's very much aligned, look for your riding partner or where your children are, very much aligned with what other visions of the bike path exist today. In addition to that, as Ronit touched upon, the existing, the new conduit system will be able to support reliability for the Falmouth Hospital, and our engineers are working on that design. We also talked a little bit about some concerns around, there's a very old tree by Depot Street, we worked, we took that information back to our arborist, Parth Sellers, who's actually a user of the bike trail, and I think he lives in the town.
He's a resident, too.
He's a resident, so he knew the backstory, he knew how the town had worked over, you know, decking over the root system in order to create that paved path. What we're proposing to do is be on the east side, so further away from where the tree is, and then he offered some advice on, some guidance, we'll be working closely with him, but based, basically on protecting while we're doing the construction, as well as ensuring health, and then future growth for the tree. Other comments that we heard from the Bike Committee were around detouring during construction and, you know, safety of the bike trail users. And so we did engage our traffic consultant, and he put together a detour around construction segments of when the bike path would need to be closed for construction. We'll continue to have that conversation with Bike Path Committees and Peter as well to refine what that detour looks like with signage and sidewalks and contemplation around the speed of certain areas that may be less than other roadways that we detour traffic through. In addition to that, we took back some information from the committee along the lines of how can we minimize closure of the bike path in our construction methodology? So the trenching, we'd have to close the bike path for in order to do the trenching. However, the manholes, and we're talking about 11, all in all, including the one that we would need in order to connect to the pad mount for the hospital off the bike path, what we could do is on, in, so the trenching we'd have to close, but for the cable pulling at the manhole locations, we can do that and leave a lane open, and then future maintenance as well. So really, what we're talking about is a short segment to get in to do the, a short segment where the bike path would be closed, to get in to do the trench work, the non-electrical work, and then the rest of the work can be done outside of a full bikeway closure. We also have taken back some data that we collected from the Bike Path Committee to refine our schedule a bit. So we now have a schematic with, and we're going to continue to have this dialogue along, we're trying to make sure that people are, you know, these projects really work, and we've done this before, we built off of, we've co-located our facilities off of passive recreational use properties in the past, bike trails specifically, working with state agencies, municipalities. What really I have found works well is when it is a collaboration, you come up with the ultimate design that serves the interests of the residents in town, some improvements that maybe they wouldn't have had prior to the work of our project, and then also too for us and residents, reliability, the hospital for Falmouth and then Martha's Vineyard. So we want to keep that communication going. And then, as Ronit said, what we're hoping to do is have another meeting early January, and then come back here, January 10th, I believe, is the next meeting that we would like to see to get on the agenda, because we do need to be on the town warrant for a vote for the easements that we need. So that's, I don't know.
Yes, we just thought it'd be good to come, where there's so much information, and it's moving quickly, because the need is, the timeline is short with the project because of the needs for reliability on the island. We felt that it was appropriate to come and do kind of a status update. You know, we anticipate that the dialogue will continue with you, with, you know, town leadership, and with the Bike Path Committee throughout. But we felt that the last conversation and information that we shared went well, it was well received, it was a really good, I think there was a better understanding of what the project is too, and what limitations. I think they also understood that we can't have an exact design, an exact timeline, timeline of sorts until we reach some general agreement. So they understood that, so that you can't put one before the other, but we also need to meet, we have to work within the confines of the town schedule, you know, the municipal, yes.
The last time, the last time we spoke on Thursday, at the end of the meeting, we also talked about the possibility of maybe running some lighting along the path, thought that seemed a favorable response from your team. I don't know if you had any more to talk about that with the team?
I think we touched upon it briefly, I mean, it's, it sounds like it's feasible, you know, we have, if we have electrical line running down, we should be able to provide electricity for lighting. So I think we can, you know, it's something that's not realm, out of the realm of possibility, it's feasible, we just need to keep.
I think Peter had another suggestion that we could put an E, electric vehicle charging station at that parking lot, where you're going to be cutting right through there anyway.
Yep, yep.
I don't know if you will pay for that station, or we can work it out, but just hopefully that can be kept in the plan, and then.
Yeah, the EV, I think I mentioned during the meeting, that we have another round, our EV Make Ready program, which is very, really great for municipalities, honestly. So that's, it ties in nicely, they have a new round, and those, you know, those programs are, all of the infrastructure is paid for by, 100% by the utility.
Right.
And then typically, the station is, you know, and there's different opportunities and grants and things. But I think that, you know, that program is going to be even better than the existing, is what I've just recently heard from that group. So it's definitely a possibility.
And then the one more thing that's going to be probably less agreeable, but I think it's more important, is the alternate route, I just don't think is practical, the first one proposed, what I think is going to happen is, I suspect that the work is going to go in segments, maybe 600 feet at a time, and the people are going to just take a quick detour, and they're going to just go down Palmer Ave.
Right. We did talk about that. You mean the detour route, is that what you meant?
Yeah, I just don't think the proposed detour route is going to work at all, and I think that what I think is going to be important to do prior to the starting of the project is to relocate existing poles out of the sidewalks on Palmer Ave, because we just, we have kind of an unsafe situation there now. It's only a few poles here and there, but I'd like to get that route spruced up to where we can know that people have a safe alternative, at least that stretch of sidewalk to be passable, because right now, you have places where you don't even have three feet to get by, and really, those poles should get moved anyway. So if we could incorporate that into the preliminary work before the start of the project, because you're a couple of years away from actually digging, right?
We anticipate construction would start sometime next fall, late next fall.
Oh, really?
However, what I will say, Scott did mention that very point to me in conversation a couple of weeks back, that there are poles that are hindering access, whether it's handicap accessibility, you know, from a ramp, or, you know, just someone walking with a stroller, so certainly a bike.
Right.
And I said that we, you know, that's definitely something we could, we could look at and see, you know, we'd have to kind of get an idea of where, what, how many, obviously it ties into, they're all connected to one another, it depends on, you move one, you have to redesign and move another, so it really depends. But I think that's something that, you know, we can definitely look at. The safety is something that came, one of the things that stands out to be, one of the members on the Bike Committee, actually a couple mentioned, that's what's important to them in general, and certainly if you're going to be detouring, is the safety and the wellness of the cyclists, of the riders. So we'll definitely take that into consideration, because I agree with you that to some extent, they may just, like you said, they'll just say, I'm not going to go this way, I'm going to go down Palmer.
Yeah, and we're going to be, we're going to be forcing them off the path and not giving them a practical, safe alternative. So I think it's going to be important that we do that.
Yeah, and we'll keep, I mean, I think that that proposed route will get tweaked, I just have a feeling it will.
Oh, it definitely will, yeah. That was the first path, and that is what our traffic consultant recommended, but we certainly would defer to those that are driving this path every single day. So we do want to make sure that folks are comfortable with what's being proposed.
It's just human nature, because the people that are using it to get to work, and there's a lot of them, they don't have that extra time to go that far around.
Right, right, for sure.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to share with us tonight?
No, I think we've covered it all.
Do you need any kind of vote from us to support you, or you just want to inform us?
I think we'll be looking to come back 10th. We'd like to get sort of this general consensus, I think it's a better idea to have one more meeting with.
The Bike Path Committee.
With the Bike Path Committee in its entirety, get this general consensus from that group to, you know, so that we can come back before you on the 10th and feel confident that the, you know, the vote for the warrant articles.
Do you need a list of poll numbers that are the concerns, or?
That'd be great, if you, I mean, if someone wants to do the research and identify, that'd be great.
I think it might be already done, actually.
That'd be great, yeah. Definitely, you know, our folks speak poll numbers more than street addresses, but they'll take a street address, too.
Okay.
Either or.
I'll give you both.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay. Discussion of right of first refusal on 31.7 acre property on Route 151, continued from December 6, 21. I've had some more thoughts since our last meeting, and I'll let you guys speak first, I know you probably have something new to say.
Yeah, so I've definitely thought about this quite a bit and done a little, well, research on my own of what I'm capable of doing. And I'm not convinced that the town is in the best place to exercise our right of first refusal at this time. So that's my opinion for now.
That's funny, now I've switched the other way for a different reason. Anybody else have initial thoughts?
I have a couple. I would agree, I don't think we're in a place right now that it would make sense to exercise our right of refusal over the property, and I don't know that it would be best for us to make any extensions. If Mr. Galasso wants to take this forward, he's got a year to do so, and I think that's great, and I certainly wish him well, but I think at this point, I would not be interested in purchasing the path or exercising our right of first refusal.
Okay. Any more from you folks?
Well, I think from my perspective, this, the terrain on this property is, makes a construction of anything very tough, and depending on what size development you're going to put down, how you're going to, you know, put the structures into it, makes it very difficult. The one question I had, that I think has to be resolved one way or another, on the map that was provided to us by the 300 Committee, it shows a parking area and a trailhead off of 151, that's pretty much in the center of the property line that parallels 151. Is there a license or an easement for that particular, you know, access? Because obviously, that's going to be even more of a restriction on whatever kind of development occurs there.
Not necessarily. If it's privately owned, it's not necessarily preserved. That's why I was kind of switching back the other way, because when we got the email from the 300 Committee, it reminded me of the importance of this connector, and the fact that maybe the town does have a role here in first acquiring the property, and then carving out that section of wildlife corridor and marine trail access and the trail itself, then maybe keeping another piece for ourselves along that track in case something magical happens and we get a chance to have a train station back, and then maybe sell off the nice flat developable, developable part, I can't say, can't speak very well tonight, to the developer or partner with the developer at a maybe slightly lower cost than the purchase price for the entire parcel now. Now, that doesn't really do much for the town as far as helping our bottom line, but it might help our residents enjoy that marine trail and know that that wildlife corridor will be safely kept intact.
Mr. Chairman, could I just note for the record, we have Town Council Frank Duffy with us, as well as acting town planner Jed Cornoch, which we appreciate very much, they both played significant role in bringing forward what the board is deliberating on and about. and about. So want to note that they're here if they can assist with questions or part of your deliberation.
Okay, thank you.
Is there something that you would just like to share with us, Mr. Cornoch, given your experience with the lot?
I still have a question about, is there a legal easement that would prevent other developers from going in there and doing other things with that part of the property?
Well, Mr. Duffy can probably help us with that. Yes, go ahead. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jed Cornoch. I'm your Acting Town Planner. It's nice to finally meet you folks. Basically, what I have to offer is obviously brand new to the community and there's an awfully big decision before you. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to read the memo that we provided, myself and former Town Planner Tom Spot, that outlined, you know, the potential constraints here. You, there's not much more I can offer other than, you know, answers to any zoning questions that you might have. I've been instructed to say, if I don't know, I simply don't know, but I will get you the answer as soon as I possibly can. But if there's any questions I can answer for you tonight, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, Jed.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
That's good advice. I take that myself.
That's right.
We appreciate that.
Mr. Duffy, can you tell us about any pre-existing rights that may be afforded to that entrance?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I have a copy of that. Frank Duffy, Town Council. Well, this property is owned by CLSV. The town has no ownership interest in it. We have not done the title to the property. I cannot tell you if there's any easement for this marine trail or the parking lot. It's something that was brought to our attention only a few days ago when we got that letter from Jessica Rittenhour of the 300 Committee. If there is an easement, of course, it's on record in the Registry of Deeds, and whoever develops the property would be responsible for honoring the terms and conditions of that easement.
But if it's not, it doesn't exist?
It's not, it's not. So I, I don't know. I know there's a trail that goes way up. It starts somewhere down around Brick Hill Road. I think it goes right up along the Route 28. But as to who actually has rights and what rights are recorded in the Registry of Deeds, I don't know at the present time.
Right.
I imagine that any developer, whether it's Mike or somebody else, if they went in there and tried to, you know, block off that access, they would, they would have a lot of uproar from the community, but also if they're trying to get, you know, various things passed, friendly 40B or whatnot, that would come up as probably a.
Value.
Exactly. That would come up as something that they would have to work within, whatever the town wants them to do on that.
Mr. Galasso, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Michael Galasso, 107 Lakeview Ave. I did meet with Jessica today regarding the trail. There are no recorded easements that she was able to find, and I told her that we'd be more than willing to work with her on preserving that easement and with the parking. We may have to relocate the parking, maybe within the project, and she thought that would be fine. Obviously, we would include in any planning for the project. You know, as I said before, I think we have a great vision for the property. I sent you a lot of information on the team that we put together, the financial interest letters that we've got. And, you know, if there's still some concern about whether or not we'd follow through with what I presented to you here, there's always a possibility that we could enter into a development agreement between, you know, the town and us as developers to outline these things. And that might be an option in order to call any concerns you may have over, you know, us moving forward. So I just wanted to offer that as a possible option of how we might be able to answer some of the concerns that you have, get it down on paper, have it signed by us and have it signed by the town as a possibility. One other thing that we asked, and I believe was in the letter that the attorney for the current property owner sent to Mr. Duffy, was that we're asking for an extension beyond that 365 days. If you see on the schedule I sent to you, it's going to take us how many days just to get ZBA approval, never mind putting all the financing together. So there was a request in that original letter for an extension of 365 days. What that means is that if we didn't close within 365 days right now, the option, your first right of refusal would kick back in. And so what, what we've asked for is an extension of that for an additional 365 days to close. So I hope in your consideration tonight that you would consider that. I just want to say one thing while I'm still up here. I want to thank the manager's office, Julian and Peter, and all the town departments, including the DPW, the building department, for helping us get through all the final checks that we needed to on McGan's Crossing. We're going to close all the financing on that project hopefully on Tuesday, I'm sorry, on Thursday, and we'll be starting construction shortly after that. But I wanted to make sure, recognize their help that they gave us the last few weeks.
Good to hear, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Galasso, do you envision that this project might be a local initiative project where you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would be a LIP.
May afford you more density on that small, developable, developable area that's there because it's like only a third or half the lot is actually buildable. Does that seem?
Well, now, you know, there's some tough terrain there, but I think on the prior 40B that was proposed, they were able to get 175 units on the site. That's not how we're going to develop the site in that arrangement.
Right.
But, yeah, there is some tough terrain. And the other question that I know one of the board members had also was about the septic system, and we would be looking at a system that reduces the nitrogen load, whether it's the RUC system that Mike McGrath has or other systems there, too. So those are sort of things I think we could iron out in a development agreement.
Okay.
And I'm here if you have any other questions for me.
Another question?
Not, not for, not for Mr. Galasso, but just in general, my comment is just, I think even, even though it's wonderful to hear what the potential is there, to me, our decision comes even just before that. Are we ready to take on this parcel to do whatever we want to do with it? It wouldn't have to be, I mean, we can exercise this right of first refusal for any reason, to leave it as open space, to develop it as affordable housing. If this board doesn't feel that we want to exercise that option, then it's wonderful if it's a LIP project and we get affordable housing out of it. But at the end of the day, whatever the purchaser is going to do, whether it's Mr. Galasso or someone else, is not going to be, it's not going to be really our decision. So at the end of the day, we just need to decide, because I think what he, what Mike is proposing is wonderful, but there's a million steps in between, and there's a lot of, you know, lots of things could, he knows this well, lots of things could go wrong. So this project could never take place. So what we really have to think about is just our decision. At this point in time, do we want to take this, you know, opportunity to buy this piece of land for whatever it is we might think we want to do with it? If the board doesn't have an appetite for that because of some of the things we've talked about, it's, you know, maybe it's not time to spend, in my opinion, that money for open space. We've spent a lot for open space in the last few years. And so if we were going to spend that kind of money, I would want to see it be where we could develop some affordable housing. And we've noted some of the challenges, and we are not in the business of necessarily managing projects like that. And this may not be the right time to get into that business with this piece of property. So hopefully, it'll be a wonderful project that does have affordable housing component, and I, I think Mike has heard, you know, the importance of that from this board and from the community. But I think our decision even just comes before we even get there.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, part of my thought process is I realize I have to, I have to do a better job of elaborating on what I'm thinking. Part of my thought process was if we purchase this and we find that it's only developable in a, in a certain spot, we do find that the terrain is more difficult, have we spent too much money on too small of a property? Could that $3 million have gone to something else? Are we going to end up with open space or find out that the easement on the utility poles is larger and encroaches on what we could build on? So I'm, I'm with Megan and with Nancy that I'm, I don't think that we as the town are in the position now to make the decision that this is a good decision.
My only reason for changing my original thought of not doing it was to ensure the preservation of the trail access, and Mr. Galasso's already addressed that, so I think I'm ready to let it go.
But the second part of that is, is about the extension. Correct, Mr. Galasso?
Oh, yes.
You're asking for the extension.
We would have to offer that as well.
But, no, we don't have to offer it. That, that's an option.
He's asking us to.
Right. And, and I think it, could we relook at it in a year if he cannot meet those deadlines? I, I don't think at this point we need to offer an extension.
But what does it hurt us if we do?
Well, if we don't offer the extension in a year, then we have a chance to look at the right of first refusal again. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, and even if we do offer it, we still have, it's, it just gives him more time to put his package together. I don't see how it harms us in any way.
I think that, I think he has a year to get his package together, and let's, and if he meets it, fine. And if he can't, it comes back. I think that would trigger the right of first refusal again, and we look at it again.
I just think it makes it more difficult for him to do his project, and I don't see any gain for us.
Well, I think, I think it helps to just give it, I think giving it a year is reasonable. We're, we're going along with him. We're saying we're, we're going to, not, my perception is I don't want to exercise our right of first refusal, and he gets a year to move on, and we look at it in a year.
So do we need to take two different votes, then?
You don't have on the agenda tonight to extend the right of first refusal for, or to waive it.
So he'd have to come back anyway.
That would be a separate action by the board. All you're determining tonight is whether you're choosing to exercise the right of first refusal.
And Mike, could you just speak a little bit one more time to what your thought is as to why you think you need that year?
Well, I think we all know how long it takes to put these affordable housing projects together. We really can't apply to the state for funding until we have our ZBA approval. They won't even, you know, look at a package that doesn't have local approval and local funding. So, you know, just the time that we're going to spend working with the neighbors, putting the plans together, the various committees and everything, I think we're going to run, you know, a full year to get there.
One of the questions I have is, is there an opportunity to work with the 300 Committee and, and split this parcel up so that there is an extension of the wildlife corridor and the marine trail in an area that, where the terrain is pretty difficult to develop anything on anyway? And it might be nice for a private developer to try to put together a package like that where part of the property is split off and left with the town through, you know, CPC funds and monies that the 300 Committee can raise from private donations.
What I told Jessica today when I met with her is that we'll work with them to whatever, you know, whatever the best solution is for them, you know, and for the project, too.
And they'll likely offer use of compensation.
The intent is, yeah, we think that, that could be a great amenity for the project. I mean, that's a great, a great trail, you know, goes all the way down to Long Pond. You've all got the maps and everything, and it could, it's a great amenity for the project. So we're going to work with them and make sure that's incorporated into the project.
Michael, how many projects of this magnitude have you done?
Here, probably nothing quite as big that's actually been built. In my 30 years I spent in San Diego before I came back, a couple of projects that had this many units.
This big.
Yeah, we redeveloped a couple of full city blocks in downtown San Diego over the years and put that all together.
So I, unless there's further discussion, I would move that we do not exercise our right of first refusal for this property.
I second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your efforts.
And interview, vote, and appoint committee members. 20 minutes. Cape Cod Commission, Robert Mescalley. Welcome.
How are you? Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Bob Mescalley, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you tonight in connection with my application to be Falmouth's representative on the Cape Cod Commission. I think most of you know me, know my involvement in various organizations in the town, the Falmouth Housing Authority, Falmouth Cable TV Advisory Board, and previously the Commission on Disabilities. I am an attorney. I've been practicing almost 50 years in the government, public and private sectors. In my earlier career, I was very involved with land use planning and development in New York. So I know that's obviously a big part of the commission and what it does, so I feel I have that relevant experience. I've spoken with Charlie McCafferty, Jay Zavala, who were previous representatives from Falmouth on the Cape Cod Commission, and they've explained to me the role and responsibility. I've attended a couple of Cape Cod Commission meetings via Zoom the past month and a half. So I think I have a pretty good understanding of what's involved. In light of the fact that it's a late night and a hectic season, I'm not going to speak any further, but if anyone has any, any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them. I look forward to the opportunity to serve on the commission, to serve the interests of Falmouth on that commission, so hope you look favorably on my application.
I would vote to appoint Robert Mescalley to the Cape Cod Commission for a term until 4/24/24.
I was just going to say, I would have appointed you even if you weren't here.
It's always good to be here in person, anyway.
I appreciate you coming in, telling us all that. Thank you so much.
Very good. Happy holidays.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mescalley.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
And now Jamie McDonald for the Council on Aging.
I'm going to, I'm going to say.
You know, I'm up late for the Council of Aging. It's almost 9:00. Hi, Jamie McDonald, how are you?
Sorry, we didn't put these earlier on the agenda. I should have noticed that.
I would move approval. I mean, we know, Mr. McDonald, he also has the two best references you could have for this.
Yeah, they're the ones who talk me into it.
Jill and Jim say that they give you a thumbs up.
He's a ringer.
I would second.
I'm in.
And this is for a position on the Council on Aging to end 6/30/2024.
Okay. Who are you going to vote, don't you?
Yeah, we're going to have to vote. Somebody might not want you on.
Drum roll, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, thanks, folks.
Very much.
Take care.
For Historical Commission, Tamsin George.
Another unknown.
Another lengthy resume.
Yeah, hello there. I talked to you, I think perhaps just last June or so, when you appointed me as an alternate again, and I had served on the commission prior to that.
Yes.
I think I bring a lot of experience with historical preservation.
I think you do.
As a compliment and different from the other members on the commission.
I agree. I would, I would move, let's see, the position is ending 6/30/2022 for Tamsin George for Historical Commission.
I'd second.
One question, would you consider yourself more of a conservative traditionalist as far as architecture and historical preservation, or would you say you're more modernistic and open-minded?
I'm just interested in what the structures look like. My experience has been in restoration and bring them to the period in which they were built, either inside or outside.
The only reason I ask, I noticed that recently I've seen some projects that, to me, have a more modern look and less traditional, and I'm wondering if that's a trend that we're moving toward, and I just kind of get a sense of your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's a trend or not. I know that at various points, we have approved newer construction because it fits in and doesn't jar in the neighborhood, because we're looking for the streetscape, what it looks like, your visual from the outside, on these, these kind of things. And so if it doesn't stand out too much, if it seems to go with the flow as you go down the street.
And I'm more of a traditionalist. I think I like to.
Well, I, my, all of my background is within. Well, I, my, all of my background is within, um.
That's why I asked you, because it sort of looked like when I was looking at your extensive resume.
Well, it sort of depends on the project.
Right.
Yes, which is exactly what it should be.
Gotta fit in this.
All right. Well, thank you for sharing that.
Nice to see you again.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your service.
Are, are you gonna reapply in June?
I know, you have to reapply in June.
This term only goes through June.
We'll see you again in June if you wanna carry on tomorrow. It's a short appointment.
I'm sure you put your application in for us. Thank you.
And now we have Paula Smith, apply for Veterans Council Committee.
I am.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Another great, long resume. We are lucky to have this talent we have here tonight.
Aren't you just so nice? Well, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. This is actually a great joy. I, uh, retired, uh, from the United States Army five years ago and I've been just waiting for my time to come in and, uh, really give back to the town that's given me so much. So, um, just to introduce myself, Paula Smith, uh, I am a native, I think, here, uh, at Falmouth. I moved here when I was two. Uh, my, my dad worked at the U.S. Geological Survey and my mom retired out of Falmouth Hospital. I think that qualifies me. Um, I earned a, I'm a lifelong learner. I earned a bachelor's degree in communications from the University of Iowa, uh, and my master's and my, uh, doctorate from, um, Baylor and from St. Augustine, uh, in, uh, physical therapy. So, uh, I've always, uh, enjoyed, uh, learning and did a whole heck of a lot of it in the service. So the third thing about me you probably should know, and especially if I'm gonna be serving well on the Veteran Council, is I am indeed a veteran. 20 years in the United States Army, um, very proud of my service, uh, and of my family's service at the same time. Um, yeah, I had an awful lot of challenging, uh, but very impactful roles over my 20 years. Uh, everything from, uh, being a deployed healthcare provider to a commander, to Department of Surgery Chief, and then on to a DC socialite, as I say, when I joined Soldier for Life in, uh, under the Chief of Staff of the Army. I returned to Falmouth to retire in 2016 and worked, uh, of course, to retire, um, I worked at Falmouth Hospital for four years as a Director of 11 Services. I know that doesn't really make sense, but it just made me happy. Uh, and, uh, then started my own writing business about a year ago. I believe in this community and I enjoy that my three kids have all benefited from the very rich resources Falmouth has and from the rich resources that I enjoyed when I was growing up here. Uh, there is a positive initiative everywhere you go, every single day here. Um, I also appreciate the love and support from Falmouth community that I received when I was in the service and have been, as I said, waiting for the time that I can give back. So appointing, uh, in the position of the Falmouth Veteran Council gives me that opportunity to serve again.
That's excellent. Thank you so much.
I only wish it were a longer term because this is also a really short one that you'll have to reapply. This is a term that ends 6/30/2022. It's just how the free, this free one, um, is. Yes, one that's open.
I would vote to appoint Paula Smith to the Veterans Council Committee, a term until 6/30/22. And I would also like to thank her for her service in the United States Army.
Thank you for your support.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Y'all, happy holidays. Thank you.
You too.
And next we have, uh, update on ARPA funding and CZM grant opportunities. Just a quick reminder of where we're at and what's going on. I, I asked about this, uh, kind of reflecting on the opportunity to consider the, uh, hiring of a Sustainability Director and the fact that our Coastal Resilience Action Committee has completed their report and we're kinda in flux right now. And I'm just curious of how we're monitoring those opportunities now. And asked for an update. So thank you so much.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, I filed a, uh, report in writing with the board as part of your board packet. I'll just, uh, summarize the bullet points if I may.
Yes, please.
Town of Falmouth has been granted, uh, $3,243,993 in federal ARPA funding of this amount. To date, the Select Board has approved the allocation of 1.7 million for the design of wastewater treatment upgrades and 325,000 for the purpose of pandemic first responder one-time bonus payments. Funds remaining at present, uh, in this, uh, from this original grant, 1.2 million dollars. These two purposes, uh, I noted are as specifically authorized by federal ARPA guidelines. And we understand the town has until 2024 to fully commit, uh, these federal grant dollars. As a parallel, Barnstable County has been granted 41, 41 million, as contrasted to our 3 million, in ARPA funding, apparently attributable to the relative populations of the various towns on the Cape. The Cape Cod Municipal Management Association has transmitted a letter to the Barnstable County Commissioners and Assembly of Delegates urging them to resolve any lingering disagreement at the county level and act affirmatively to reasonably and fairly disperse a significant amount of this enormous grant amount to benefit the residents of the respective towns on the Capes and, and Cape, including Falmouth, of course. Continuing a federal infrastructure bill was recently passed by and signed by President Biden. Town is working with Massachusetts Municipal Association in monitoring the availability of these potential federal funds for qualified projects. This process is still underway and Falmouth is prepared to proceed appropriately as soon as critical details on this, uh, grant funding is clarified. Standard protocol for the delivery of federal grant funding to municipalities and the Commonwealth, as the board is aware, involves the requirement to work through state agencies who are characteristically tasked with being the pass-through entity for local governments. We're very familiar with this process and, uh, monitoring it, working with Mass Municipal Association. Finally, staff members have been closely watching for the availability of supplemental Coastal Zone Management, or CZM, grant funding through the Commonwealth. I have been advised that there is no, no current CZM grant opportunity at this particular time. Staff member Jennifer Lincoln reminds me that both CZM and MVP grant sources, both of which have been forthcoming to Falmouth in the past, usually announce their grant opportunities in the spring and we are monitoring, uh, for that development. And that's a, uh, snapshot of bullet points on those, uh, grant opportunities.
Good to know. Thank you very much.
And I also, I also, I just wanted to make a comment that in reading through the notes from, I believe, our last meeting, when I think Jennifer Mullen was here and she was talking about ARPA fundings.
Mm-hmm.
And did, and we did talk about this. Am I correct?
Yes.
Because it says that the ARPA funding, 1.7 million dollars for the design, um, of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and that this is a, a $21 million project and that she had suggested that we, that we use that. Um, and is that money that, is that money through the Clean Water Act? Does any of that get filtered through there?
So, yes.
Good question.
So, um, this, this speaks to other grant fund leveraging. So, yes, it is on the, it's on the intended use plan for the state revolving fund, um, which makes it eligible for the Cape Cod Water Protection Fund, um, up to 25% of project cost. Um, and as well as I, what I have heard is that the, um, infrastructure grants, uh, the federal infrastructure, infrastructure grant money that will be coming through, um, will also flow through the states and through the state revolving fund. So having that, uh, that wastewater plant upgrade designed puts us in a terrific position to be able to leverage all three funding sources.
Should go. Thank you.
And then, is there any chance that we can also apply to, for funding for the, uh, bridge reconstruction project that we've already designed over in?
We are monitoring that for the first opportunity to do so.
Right. Cause, uh, it's just a whirlwind of potential opportunities. I just, I'm glad that we're staying on top of that.
Yep.
And I had one other question, Mr. Chair. Um, is there something that we should be doing as a board, um, to communicate to the county, um, sort of our position about, and I know that Assembly of Delegates and Commissioners have been sort of going back and forth with some of these funds, but it, you know, and this is just a question to put out there. Is, when is the time and what is the right way? Is it appropriate for us to communicate at some point in time a feeling about some of the way that those funds are going to flow?
Do you wanna answer that? Or, I mean, I, I can answer it from an Assembly.
I was gonna ask you to address it anyway, so thank you.
So, uh, it's just a, a matter of legal opinions of how the process should go forth. Assembly unanimously voted to stay the course with our position that it's, we already have a process. It's called the ordinance process for allocating funds. I think the only holdup right now is the Commissioners want to make a new process. And according to Attorney Troy, it's outside the scope of the charter. So we're just asking to stay within the charter and just keep moving forward with the process that we already have in place. But ultimately move us forward faster than trying to create a new process. So that's, that's just an Assembly person's point of view. The, uh, the Commissioners feel like they wanted to streamline process. They wanted, um, create a, I already explained it to you before, but I, I'll just briefly say it again. They want to create a little, uh, committee or a commission group, whatever, and they'll initially vet the project, bring them to the Commissioners for consideration. If they like it, they'll send it to the Assembly for consideration and possible vote. If we vote up, we send it back to the Commissioners for signature. Uh, that would maybe be a little bit faster, but not much. To me, not enough to be, you know, worth changing and making a new process, which may be outside the charter and maybe not lawful. So I don't know what we could say as a board to, to move it faster, but if you, if you research the, the conversations and, and look at the minutes of what was said, and the minutes from the Assembly are like a transcript. So you can really see exactly what was said and what, what the points are. If this board, if you want to put an agenda item and come to a conclusion, if you think that you prefer the Commission's position over the Assembly's position and you guys want to talk about it and come to a vote and send that letter, I, I don't know what else we could do as a board to, to say, to fix it.
Peter had it.
Yes, Peter.
Yeah, just, um, you know, obviously I defer to you in terms of the workings of the county, not my area of expertise in terms of what's, you know, which body should have control of the spending. I, I did have a chance to participate in the Cape Cod Managers' monthly meeting where we talked about this. Um, and those present, which was probably about half the Cape towns, um, were all unanimous in, you know, there, you know, potentially different ideas about what the priorities for spending are in different communities, but what we were all in agreement on was, please don't delay the process. Don't create a long, a big application review process that, you know, that we would have to go through at the county. So if, if the board were inclined to send a message to the county, I think it would be, you know, not necessarily one of taking sides.
Correct, but just emphasizing.
Assembly versus Commission, it would just be, please don't hold up the process because we have to commit all these funds by, uh.
2020.
Yeah, 2024. And these projects, you know, a lot of them have long time, timeframes.
Yeah.
So they may, you know, we, the state, we, it was, and I'll just speak for myself at this point. Um, I was very disappointed that the state legislature took so long to allocate ARPA money. Um, and, you know, the governor came out with a plan very quickly that, you know, seemed to hit priorities that, uh, that were, had pretty good overlap with this board and this community. But the legislature, you know, chose to drag it out for, what was it, six, nine months? Um, so I, I would just hope that locally, you know, regionally, the county could do better and, uh, come to a relatively quick decision. And when that decision is made, also set up a process that's pretty streamlined. And so I think the board could potentially send that message now.
Well, there's, there's been no delay. Each time it's come up, it's been voted. There's been no, pushing it down the road. It's just that, it's just not agreement.
Right. So there's no decision yet.
Yeah.
I know, but how, how can you make it go faster if you, if you voted every time it comes up?
Well, I would just say the part.
Who is, who, who's, who's in the position to, to define who has the authority? Cause that's what it seems to be.
The Assembly is the stronger position because.
I, I want somebody above the county level, you know, like the Attorney General to come in and say, hey, look, your charter says this. This is how it should go.
Uh, maybe that'll come to that. I don't know.
I guess what.
The process has already been moved forward. So here's the thing, uh, the, the Commissioners rejected our vote of ordinance, which said that we will use the ordinance process. It's already in place. So they rejected it. It came back to us last Wednesday. We reaffirmed our vote. We voted to overrule their veto. And so the process will come to an end very shortly. I don't know what else recourse they have.
So I guess I would like to just, on behalf of the Town of Falmouth, which has, as we've talked about a million times, and so many initiatives that we could, and needs that we could use funds for, I would very much like, as a board, to say, you know, we understand that there's, you know, we're not taking a position, but just really emphasizing the need to move these funds along. Because the money that you would use these funds for are gonna be bigger projects. They aren't something that you're going to, you know, complete in a, in a six-month period. These are long-term. They have many steps, possibly lots of permitting, depending on what you, I don't know, you know, depending what we use these types of funds for. But I really, you know, I don't want to lose this. I mean, if you don't commit these and use them, it's going to go back. And we're not, and we're gonna lose this opportunity. And so, you know, we are one of the, the larger towns on the Cape and I really want to make sure that we truly advocate for people in Falmouth. So I'd like to think about the way we could just.
Let's send a letter to say, let's, uh, move this process forward if you want to do that.
So maybe could, could staff perhaps take a stab at just drafting a letter and get, and we could look at it at our next meeting? Something to, again, we're not, we're not trying to wade into the fray.
I mean, we don't even, for that matter, we can come to agreement right now that if the letter is just gonna say, the board, uh, has agreed to ask you to move this process forward, we can, we can email us a copy of it and.
You know, I think another, another way of saying what Megan is saying, I mean, typically the financing, you know, is the thing that determines the schedule with which you can move forward, right? And if, so if, if, if they can't help us understand just what the available funds would be for Falmouth, you know, we got our hands tied until they do. So it's in our interest.
You can take a guess that it would be about 14% of the 41 million, cause that's our population.
You guys have to get out of the way, though.
Let's, let's agree right now to ask staff to draft a letter and send it right out.
Great.
Why wait till the next meeting?
Unless, unless town manager or, or town council feels like that's not a wise decision. I mean, but I think, I would like to just stress without being confrontational, cause that's not the issue, but just stress the importance of these needs and the fact that we're just weeks away from 2022. So 2024 is not very far away.
Right.
And I'd hate to lose this opportunity.
Is that okay to just?
Happy to transmit a letter, uh, along the lines of the sentiment the board just expressed.
Yeah. I mean, I don't see any reason to wait. We know what it's gonna, basically we have pretty good idea of what it's gonna say.
Thank you.
We understand you're doing everything that you can, Doug, to move it along. We're just trying to give you more pressure.
Do you want to? And both votes have been unanimous.
Well, it's just that, it's just that the county.
Unanimous consent? Yes.
We're part of, we're part of this community. And I know sometimes we lose focus that, what's happening at the county level because we're just so focused here. But it's an important part of our governance and our way of kind of getting, moving projects forward. So.
Well, at the end of the day, this board has allocated more than half of your funds already.
Correct.
So you've taken that very seriously. Move, move ahead and I think it's in that spirit that you're talking about.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could, could I suggest actually a formal vote would be helpful to be able to put that in the letter?
Okay.
I wouldn't move, I'm happy to do it if you don't listen here on the Assembly, but I would move that we transmit a letter, um, just emphasizing, um, the importance of moving quickly with, um, determining the process for the allocation of these funds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we wanna renew some licenses?
Oh, I'm happy to read it.
Would you like to read it?
You know, I love reading it.
Excellent reader.
I'll read it as the motion. I'll just do all of them. It's not a long list. So, Wine and Malt Restaurant, Silver Beach Pizza and Seafood, 557 North Falmouth Highway, Common Victoriler, Bite on the Go, 5 Old Meeting House Road, Coffee Obsession, 110 Palmer Highway, Coffee Obsession, 38 Water Street, Dana's Kitchen, Inc., 881 Palmer Avenue, DeVore Kitchen, 352 Main Street, Dilly's Taqueria, 281 Main Street, East Falmouth Subway, LLC, 236 T-Ticket Highway, Falmouth Hospital Cafeteria, 100 Terrahune Drive, KNL Enterprises, DBA Subway, 137 T-Ticket Highway, McGansett Circle Incorporated, DBA The Stand, 75 County Road, Peel Pizza, 31 T-Ticket Highway, Silver Beach Pizza and Seafood, 557 North Falmouth Highway, The Buffalo Jump, 227 Hatchville Road, Inholder, Admiral Street Inn, 51 T-Ticket Highway, Class II Used Autos, Battles Used Auto, Used Cars and Trucks, 14 Depot Avenue, SIDS Auto Brokers, 91 Car Landy Circle, XL Auto Repair and Sales, 94 East Falmouth Highway, Falmouth Auto Center Incorporated, 614 East Falmouth Highway, Hickey Auto, Inc., DBA Executive Auto, 118 East Falmouth Highway, M&amp;M Auto, 20A Village Common Drive, T-Ticket Autobody, 108 Trotting Park Road, and Vehicles for Hire, All Seasons Taxi, 4 Simpsons Lane.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have any comments on the meeting minute?
I have a couple.
Go ahead. Go ahead first.
On the first page, uh, in the public comment, it says, Rosemeyer, Drager, Carey, Precinct 5. The very last, since the last discussion was in July. Um, I don't remember if she said that or not, but wasn't our last discussion actually in August? Wasn't the public session that we held in August?
I think so. Was our public session in August?
I believe. I wouldn't, wanna guess that.
This is a big thing?
Yeah. I don't know. Well, if we can just find out whenever our public session was.
Yeah.
Yep.
On page four, the very top of the page, says they can work out with Webner. Uh, Webner is an acronym that's.
Yeah. And I would say Webner Center, which is, so it's Wacoit Bay National Estuari and Research Center. It just, if we could use the whole term for that center, I think would be better than the acronym. Not everybody recognizes what the acronym represents.
Also, on that page, under three, the, the second paragraph, Robinson made a PowerPoint presentation to committee advices encouraging slash working. Is that supposed to be advices?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, I think that might have been it for me. And, I think that motto's been it for me.
Okay, I have a couple of others. On page two, under B, the third paragraph, you get down to the very last line and says, the actual construction will not be bid out until approved of the borrowing, this 1.7 dollars, I think it should be 1.7 million, will cover design and have it ready for permitting. There's just a, there's some missing there. And then I have another one on the top of page three, the very first sentence, Mullen said they bill, and I think it's supposed to be, commercial taxpayers, what they bill the residential taxpayers? Isn't that?
Well, that's the truth, because that's, everybody pays the same.
Yeah, but, but otherwise, it's just ambiguous, just bill the taxpayers twice, right?
Commercial taxpayers, they'll, they'll, the residential.
I just needed the word commercial and residential.
Yeah, so I think that, that just clarifies.
Add a couple of words to that.
That sentence. I'm prepared to move approval on these minutes. If nobody has anything else.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just make a comment that I'm very pleased that we are now, we're still consistently getting these at the next meeting.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Jen. Wherever you are, you can hear us.
I guess she will when she goes to do these minutes.
Yes.
And does anybody have a select board report that they'd like to give?
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of items. Basically, the, I had just, Kathy Walrath, who's the chair of the Friends of an Opska Light Board, called me and called today, and, you know, they're moving along on the, on the restoration of the White House, they're held up by funding, but they have gotten pretty far along to the point where they're going to, they finished the upgrade of the septic system that got done recently, and they're now looking at the site changes that have to be done in order to get a, you know, ADA access issue squared away. That, you know, ultimately has to happen before they can get an occupancy permit for the general public. So, I wanted to report on that progress. But they've also found out that the Coast Guard, well, the five-year lease to the town ends on this December 31st, and I know I suggested that Kathy call Julian to talk about us approving that lease, but since it couldn't get on the agenda in time, we couldn't deal with it tonight. December 31st is going to happen before we get to our next select board meeting, and I know we're supposed to be just dealing with the budget on January 3rd, but it seems to me this is something we could slip in there, just not put too much distance between the expiration of the current license and our authorization for renewing the second license. The second, the second five-year extension is essentially exact same as she described it, as the previous five-year lease, so there's no, no changes. And I would also mention that they have been working with the Coast Guard to eventually get to a point where the Coast Guard would turn over ownership of the property to the town. And, and, you know, we may have to go through some sort of bidding process, but the fact that the town is through the CPA funds and CPC has invested, I think, over a million dollars, and then the town itself, you know, upgraded that parking area right outside of the tower. So, we've got a considerable amount of public money invested in it, so I think we're in a very good position. And she did mention that that is one of the key weighting factors that the Coast Guard will use in determining who would win a competitive bid process. But, so, her sense was that feedback they've gotten from talking to the Coast Guard is that we will be the likely recipients of title to that property when they get to that point. But it is something we don't want to slip up on, and I, I just wanted to report that conversation to you, so you know that it's kind of going on in the background. Now, I don't know whether we could slip it in as a single item, I would assume it would be no significant deliberation to hold us up in looking at our, our budget issues if we did it on the 3rd along with that, but I throw that out as a request. You have to consider that, and you can work it out.
Is that possible, we can squeeze that in?
It is, it's, it's unfortunate that in spite of months of effort to get the license renewal extended, it came in at 4:20 PM on Friday night.
Yeah.
Over 48 hour, or over 24 hours after we'd posted the agenda.
Right.
So, for inexplicably, so I think with the board's concurrence, we could, and, you know, we could put that on the agenda as the lone other item on Monday the 3rd.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then I think our discussions, I did have the opportunity to go to the wake for Don Hoffa, and just mentioned that he, he was a longtime Rotarian and had been recognized for his many contributions working for services to the town, had an enviable and exemplary career in the Coast Guard before settling here, I guess, in, in Falmouth. It was certainly a, a nice tribute to give to a gentleman that has given so much to the town and to his community and to his country, so. And the last thing was just to mention that the EDIC board is, you know, working on trying to upgrade the masonry on the Falmouth Station. It is degraded, and we've, we have an article, an application with the Community Preservation Committee to get some historic preservation money to, to do that, but that's, the brickwork needs to be repointed and in some cases, reset, so that was, that happened at the last board meeting to which you actually appointed me as your representative, so, that's it.
I was surprised to watch on the planning board meeting this past week that, for one, they didn't seem to remember that I was their liaison, because I usually watch their meetings on the TV instead of logging in or showing up. But they also mentioned that the Route 28 Committee has been meeting, and two select board representatives have been not attending the meeting? I wasn't aware that that committee was formed.
What, Route 28, you mean the Davisville?
I don't know what they were referring to, honestly, but.
Just the Reset Working Group is what they're talking about.
No, so.
Yeah.
What's up with that, is that?
Not the Route 28.
That's unrelated.
There have been, I think, four meetings, and I was just, we just had one last week that Julie and I were both at.
Attending that.
And Julie was at a conference for, for work in New Orleans, but I think there's maybe one that we both couldn't go to.
I haven't been to any, but I actually was just talking to Jed, because he sent me a reminder email about the one Thursday that I couldn't attend, and so he and I are scheduled to, well, scheduling to meet beginning of January, so he can catch me up.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I've attended, it's a, it's a draft of some bylaw language that we've gone through, so.
Well, this is Davis Straits Reset, okay.
Correct, I, I don't know if they're referring to something else, I don't know any other subcommittee that.
What they said was Route 28, and I thought that committee was yet to be formed.
Yeah, that's not meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a public discussion about that back, was that October or November? That Peter McConney in Public Works scheduled that, in one, in the school.
That was just to notify the public.
Yeah, it was a public information session, but no other sessions have been held. This is strictly the Davis Straits Working Group.
Are we going to reconvene that committee? I think we talked about that.
That's going to be happening, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so as far as the Davis Straits Reset, I've gone to some, and we went through the whole language of the, the draft of the bylaw, and so, there has been select board.
Fascinating stuff.
Yeah.
Well, it is, it is.
No, I mean, I think it's been very productive, that was going to be my report, it's been, it's been very productive, it is, you know, you're going through kind of line by line, but we've had a lot of good discussions about, just, you know, thoughts about what the, what this would look like and opportunities, and there'll be, you know, really, the hope is obviously for much more public input when we get to that point.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'll chime in on that, is that I haven't been to any meetings, because they were mostly scheduled when I was taking a class, or when I was at work. So, I had been in touch with Tom Bod about some of the things, but Jed and I are going to meet sometime in January before I hopefully go on vacation. So, he plans on catching me up on everything. But the other thing I wanted to mention was that on Friday, Nancy and I had the pleasure of going to Joint Base Cape Cod for their tour. They had stopped doing them for the winter, but there was Nancy and I, and then a group from the Wampanoag Tribe in Mashpee who wanted to go, and so they, they scheduled a special, I don't think it was particularly special, but they scheduled a tour for us, and so we did that on Friday, it was incredibly informative. The base was very different from what I imagined it was going to look like, so I'm really glad that we went. And they said they're going to start them up again in the spring, and they're just going to keep them going, they found that it's the best outreach and communication they've had with the community in a long time, so.
Machine gun range tour?
Yeah, so they, they take us to their virtual range, and then to one of their water treatment facilities, and then to one of their current ranges, and then the range that's in question about expanding. So, it's four stops, about three hours, lots of good conversation, it was good.
Is this wastewater treatment you're talking, or freshwater?
No, it's the freshwater, the machine gun range. At the, yeah, at the base, so they have mobile units, so they showed us one of them and described what it does.
The one thing we didn't get was to go up in the Black Hawk, like, the last time I was there. It was really cool, really cool.
Well, I'm glad they didn't tell me about that before, because I would have asked them.
All right.
Are you outside?
Yes.
So, I just have one quick thing. Substance Use Commission, I went to that meeting this week, and they had a presentation by Wellstrung, and I don't know if you know Wellstrung at all?
I do.
But they're doing some amazing work with people in recovery and the importance of being physically healthy and how that works with the brain and how it enhances recovery. They just did a really, a really great presentation, really interesting, and I didn't know that much about it prior to that, so, really good resource. It's a great resource.
Really good innovative ideas about recovery here happening in town.
Yep.
Especially that, and then there's acupuncture program, which is very helpful to some people, and the outreach from the police department with the people that are having overdose issues, all these different, I mean, it's going to take a lot of different approaches to, to get to different folks, but it's good that we're having this happen.
Physical health and recovery is absolutely, you know, has to happen.
Absolutely, because it makes you feel good about yourself.
Yeah, it doesn't.
And it helps you create community.
That's such a huge part of it.
It's, anyone can go to any gym if you're in recovery, but this is a, this is a gym for people specifically in recovery.
In recovery.
So, it's a place, you know, recovery happens in community, you don't live in recovery on your own, so that's one of the beautiful parts about Wellstrung, isn't it?
And they also have other programs, you know, not just the gym, they do yoga, and they do meditation, and they do, you know, lots of things to support people in recovery.
Right, because not everybody wants to lift weights all day.
Right.
All right, anything else?
Yes, thank you. We mentioned the virtual meeting of Davis Straits Working Group, Megan referred to that earlier. Just as a reminder, the board's next meeting is Monday, January 3rd, for the specific purpose of presenting the proposed fiscal year '23 operating budget to the board. Your next regular business meeting following that is Monday, January 10th, which as per town charter will include the board's consideration of adoption of the FY '23 operating budget and transmittal to the Finance Committee to initiate the annual deliberation process. There's also been a suggestion for a select board meeting to review and discuss various items on Saturday morning, January 15th, and just ask, ask the board if you might take a look and see whether or not that might be an available date, should you wish to, to meet and catch up on a few items. Also, as a reminder, town hall and town administrative offices will be closed on Friday, December 24th for the Christmas holiday, and on Friday, December 31st for the New Year's Day holiday. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is everybody available on the 15th for 8:00 AM? At this point, I am.
At this point, I am.
At eight?
Yeah.
Just kidding, that's fine.
The earlier we start, the earlier we finish, right?
Yeah, no, it's fine, just have to get a babysitter, so.
I signed up for the MMA Annual Meeting, the 21st and 22nd. We used to get the Beacon as a paper copy, and you could fill out the form, and you could turn it in to Diane, and she would take care of it all. Well, my experience is basically, just go to MMA.org, go in there, and you'll see the annual meeting listed, and then you can go through and register, and then they will send you a confirmation, and you, and you can pick the fact that you don't want to pay then, that somebody else is going to pay for it, and you get an email, and then I just forwarded that to Diane, and so it actually went fairly smoothly, but, anyway.
Is, I'm sorry, we finished?
No, I said, you, you do have to pay for your, the room if you're going to stay at the Sheridan overnight, but the town will reimburse you for that and the travel and, and any meals that you have to pay for.
Does anybody feel like 8 o'clock's too early on Saturday?
The earlier the better.
Okay.
I was totally joking, that's fine.
Okay. Wouldn't want to go any earlier than eight, though.
No. Well, that's Mr. Sussa's regular working hours, right? But Saturdays, overtime.
Works for me, works for me. No overtime over here.
Oh, gee, sorry.
Another day.